Good evening. Hello, good evening, good evening. Hope you can hear me. We are so glad that you're here tonight. I'm sorry it's not a full house. We just don't have enough people here tonight. Now, we're really thankful that you're here. If you wouldn't mind, we're going to stand for an invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Father, may we live each day under your protection and guidance. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I don't know about my colleagues, but that really sounded great to hear so many youth in the audience saying the pledge of allegiance. So, thank you for joining us tonight. Welcome to the December 4th, 2012 Board of County Commissioners meeting. You're here alive and ready. What a great group. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion for the minutes.
Move approval.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Just a question. Are we going to approve all minutes from September, October, and November?
All three.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Are there none of those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. With that, we're going to turn to our proclamation and presentation portion of the agenda. We're excited, as always, to have Sue with us tonight. We're going to jump right into our environmental resources. This is our Cooperative Education and Environmental Education Division, our annual Christmas remembrance. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Sue Munyon, and I'm the 4-H Extension Agent for St. Lucie County. And 4-H is a youth development organization that has over four, I'm sorry, 6.5 million youth members nationally. I would like to give you a snapshot picture of what 4-H looks like in St. Lucie County. There are 23 4-H clubs throughout the county. These clubs are organized and run by 41 trained adult volunteers. I would like to ask the club volunteer leaders to stand up right now to be recognized. In 2012, 4-H volunteers donated over 14,000 hours to the 4-H program. The value of their contribution can be calculated to over $260,000. As you will hear tonight, 4-H projects cover a wide range of topics from line dancing to robotics, market animals, to the environment. Over 350 4-H club members give back to this community through approximately 46 community service activities. Speaking to you tonight are the club presidents and/or vice presidents of many of the 23 4-H clubs. I hope you enjoy your gifts, and I know that you're going to enjoy learning more about 4-H in St. Lucie County. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening. I'm Tori Lampour, President of Spurs and Stuff 4-H Club.
And I'm Gianna Vergilio, Vice President of Spurs and Stuff 4-H Club.
4-H provides our youth an opportunity to develop as leaders through hands-on learning. As our second year as a group, having only seven members last year, and now having 12. We have big plans for this 4-H year, from volunteering at local shelters to having bake sale fundraisers. Just last week, we participated in the sights and sounds Christmas parade. We had a blast decorating our floats and our horses.
The reason why we are standing in front of you today is to thank you for making all of this possible. Without you, all we would not, all we would not be able to grow as a 4-H family and help our, our community. On behalf of our 4-H, our 4-H club, we filled Mason jars without, with wonderful scented candles to enlighten your holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, double trouble.
Good evening. I'm Chrissy Long, President of Turn and Burn 4-H Club.
And I'm Megan Kevers, Vice President of Turn and Burn 4-H Club.
The county commissioners' continued support of 4-H provides us with the opportunity to make our community and county a better place for all and, for all and develop lifetime friendships.
This year, we have felt a great sense of accomplishment by helping fill bags with oyster shells to assist marine life restoration. We also help feed the homeless at Sarah's Kitchen. As always, we are looking forward to participating in the St. Lucie County Fair.
This year, we have made you a lasting gift of Senate, gift of Senate hangers. The hangers are covered in our club colors, and there is a bag of homemade potpourri on the hanger. We hope you enjoy this gift, and we thank you for your continued support of 4-H in St. Lucie County.
Happy holidays from Turn and Burn 4-H Club.
Thank you, Turn and Burn.
Good evening. My name is Ally Brown, and I am a senior and the President of Hog Huggers 4-H Club. I have been a part of Hog Huggers for 10 years, and throughout the 10 years that I've been in there, I have never seen a more better club. We have been a part of many amazing things, some of those being collecting canned foods every November, visiting nursing homes, organizing beach cleanups. We've adopted the Manatee Center, and we've given, gave the Hibiscus House children a Christmas. Just like every year, we plan to do the same thing. Your support is the concrete base to our organization. With well over 6 million members and volunteers, 4-H reaches way beyond our community. 4-H has been a huge part of my life since I was eight, and unfortunately, this is my last year. But I know because of your continuous support, many 4-Hers will be able to be a part of the same thing that I have. Thank you from Hog Huggers and me, and we hope you a very happy holidays.
Yeah. Actually, if you wouldn't mind, why don't you have your group stand up? And I want to have the others stand up. Just if you wouldn't mind having your group stand up for a quick moment. That's great, thank you. And then Turn and Burn, why don't we have your group stand up real quick? Turn and Burn? Good, good. And then Spurs? There they are. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brandon D. Francisco, and I'm the President of Porcher's 4-H Club. I am a senior this year at Lincoln Park Academy. We would like to thank you for your continued support of the 4-H program and the St. Lucie County Fair livestock program. Being in 4-H, we learned from the educational field trips. This year, some of our members attended an educational swine program at the University of Florida. We are also planning a trip to Adams Ranch for a tour of the ranch. 4-H clubs also learn by providing community services. Recently, we participated in the Thanksgiving food drive. We have also adopted a needy family for Christmas. We will be giving Christmas gifts and much-needed clothes and shoes to a family of five. Fundraisers are an important part of our 4-H program. This is how we raise money to pay for a club expenses and trips. This year, we sold Paula Dean's cookie dough and are planning our annual pie option. On behalf of Porcher's 4-H Club, we would like to wish you and your families a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thanks again for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, buddy, and you can lift that microphone right up to you there.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Cyrus Wilkes with the Treasure Coast Robotics 4-H Club. We study robotics and compete in the first Lego League for nine-to-14-year-olds, and we make science and technology fun. This year's, this is our robot Tigger. And he will compete against the teams worldwide. This year's special theme is helping senior citizens. Our team has visited with family members, friends, neighbors, and residents of a nursing home. Our goal is, is to make household chores easier for seniors so they can stay in their homes longer. Thank you for keeping 4-H alive.
Thank you. Great, there they are. Thank you, robotics.
Good evening, county commissioners and friends. I'm Marissa Hall and co-president of the Starbright Dog Obedience Club. We're, we have been together for approximately 10 years, and our club members' ages range from about six to 17, with the majority being between the ages of six and 12. This year, to thank you for your continued support of 4-H, our club has donated $100 in your name to Project Kit, which will help to provide military dogs stationed in the Middle East with toys and equipment for them to be able to do, complete their jobs. Merry Christmas to you all, and thank you for your continued support of 4-H.
Great, thank you. Do you have your club with you tonight? Is your club with you, Marissa? Okay. Hey, guys.
How you doing?
Can you tell us about some steer?
My name is Nicholas Presutti. I'm President of Showstopper's 4-H Club.
And I'm Preston Payne, Vice President of Showstopper's 4-H Club.
This is my fifth year showing. So far this year, our part in serving the community is, we have started Adams Ranch to help for hospice, and we're gathering food to donate and help get back to the community that has given us so much. We also did the second annual Grand Slam Fishing Tournament, and it was completed only successfully by the hard work of our club and the Hog Huggers 4-H Club and the support of our community. 4-H has taught me a lot of responsibility, not only for taking care of such a big animal, but also for keeping records of what we'd buy and teaching us how it would be used in real life. For maybe one of my 4-H club, we thank you for all your continued support of St. Lucie County's 4-H. Have a good night.
Anybody from your club here? There they are. Hey, guys.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Blair Addle, and I am the President of Ruters Freight Club.
And my name is Ryan Beany, and I'm the Secretary.
For our club, we have done community service. We have collected food for the Humane Society. We have also helped Big Brothers and Big Sisters Christmas Angel Project, which is giving gifts to the homeless.
This past year, for an educational field trip, we have gone to the University of Florida to see the swine research unit. Thank you for the opportunity to do these things.
Thank you. Anyone from your club here? Yes. Stand up, guys.
Ruters?
Ruters.
There they are.
There they are. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Delora Kohler, and I'm President of Midnight Riders 4-H Club.
And I'm Samantha Meter, the Vice President. This year, we've collected food for the Thanksgiving food drive, made shoebox gifts for the Operation Christmas Child, and participated in the sights and sound Christmas parade. We are looking forward to volunteering at All Pets Rescue and participating in the 2013 St. Lucie County Fair.
Our gift to you this year is a donation to Hope's Closet, a children's clothing ministry. We would like to say thank you for all that you've done, because without you, none of this would be possible. Thank you and have a happy holiday.
Anybody from your club here? There they are. Great group.
I'm Riley Hamilton from Clover 4-H. As a service project, Clover 4-H does Pioneer Day at the Savannah's Preserve. Pioneer Day is a hands-on living history day where attendees experience history by grinding corn, dipping candles, washing clothes with a washboard and clothesline, making corn husk dolls, and many other activities. This popular event is attended by hundreds and brings the history of St. Lucie County to life. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anybody from Clover? Great, thank you all for attending. Good evening.
Hello and good evening. My name is Savannah Ward, and I'm the President of Rogers and Curtis 4-H Club.
And I'm Haley Mappas, the Vice President.
Thanks to you, thanks to you, this is our second year as a 4-H group. To thank you for your continued support, we made a gift basket with fresh fruit, homemade bread, and assortment of homemade toppings like apple butter and citrus marmalade, just to name a few. We hope that you enjoy your fresh treats, and once again, thank you for your continued support. Have a happy and merry holiday. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody from your, there. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Harris, and I'm President of Pause and Claws 4-H.
My name is Corbin Martin, and I'm the Vice President of Pause and Claws 4-H. So far this year, we have done a food drive, donating non-perishable items to the families in need, and we plan to do another at our next meeting. We also held our showmanship clinic on poultry, rabbits, and cave.
Next, we plan to go to Bush Wildlife Sanctuary for a community service, field trip, and photography project. We're also having a fundraiser at Party in the Park. On behalf of Pause and Claws, we would like to thank you for keeping 4-H in your budget, budget, and supporting us. Have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Anyone from Pause and Claws? Another great group. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Austin Ironberg, the Equinarts K-9 to Equine Club Liaison.
And my name is Mackenzie Barnes, the Equinarts K-9 to Equine Secretary and Treasurer.
This year, our club has been working very hard for our community and raising money for our club.
We have gone to Creature Safe Place to clean their garden and donated 115 pounds of bird seed.
We also collected food for the Treasure Coast Food Bake, and we did a barn cleanup at the Equinarts Barn.
For future community service, we are going to assist a soup kitchen.
For future, oh, I'm in. For club fundraisers, we had two car washes, and we also had a Resell-It Day raffle and raffled off a horse trim and basket.
Our club is going to have a spaghetti dinner with an auction on December 16th of this year.
For an end-of-the-year trip, we plan on going camping with our horses and possibly going to Rapids Water Park.
This year, we made you ornaments and made a donation to Creature Safe Place in the name of the St. Lucie County Commissioners. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you. Equinarts, I see you all against the wall. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, I am Zoe Barbeau, the President of the Research Coast Florida Junior Academy Science 4-H Club. RCFJS has been a club for three years, but this is its first year as a 4-H club. Our mission is twofold. One, we will be representing St. Lucie County at different science competitions throughout the year. Two, we want to promote science throughout the community. We have started a blog this year. We would like to invite you to the St. Lucie County Regional Science Fair Open House to view St. Lucie County's best science fair projects. It is hosted by Indian River State College at the Kite Center on February 7th. Thank you for supporting 4-H and have a good holiday.
Wow, thank you. Anyone with you? Anyone with you?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, Zoe. Good evening.
Good evening. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, and fellow 4-Hers. I'm Caitlin Hersgasky, President of Tripoli Riders. Since this is our club's first year, we've been extremely busy. We have been working hard on our current and upcoming ecology projects, community service, and drill team practices. I would like to thank everyone who has helped make this 4-H group possible. It teaches so many people responsibility, loyalty, and important life lessons. We hope you enjoy the gifts we put together. Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Anybody from Tripoli with you?
Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, fellow 4-Hers, Merry Christmas. I am Deborah Shavitt from Country Kickers 4-H Club.
And I'm Bonnie Valden, Vice President.
This is our first year as a club, and we've been very busy.
We have been learning new dances, and we recently performed at PSL Civic Center for Dream Fest. And we have several other events scheduled to dance at.
At this time, I would like to thank each and every one of you for your support of the 4-H program as it teaches many life lessons and loyalty to so many young people. And without you, it would not be possible. Christmas is a time of year for giving and sharing with others, and as you can tell by the amount of people here tonight, that has happened.
We hope you enjoy the gift baskets we put together for you with help from Nelson's Family Farms.
Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone from Country Kickers here? Of course, that was Commissioner Hutchinson's granddaughter. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Zoe McClary, and I'm President of the Rocking Horse 4-H Club.
Hi, my name's Brittany Lengel, and I'm Vice President of the Rocking Horse 4-H Club. We would like to thank you for all of your support that allows us to enjoy the 4-H program.
This year, we've had the opportunity to participate in some educational clinics as well as ongoing community service projects. I hope you all enjoy the cookies our club has made for all of you, as well as the donation in your name to dogs and cats forever. Thank you and happy holidays.
I like that all the clubs stood up while they were speaking. That was a great idea. Leadership, that's what we're seeing.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Nelson, President of Boots and Bridals 4-H Club.
And I'm Alexis DiStefani, Vice President of Boots and Bridals 4-H Club.
This is my second year in 4-H and first year in Boots and Bridals. It is also in Boots and Bridals first year in 4-H. Our club varies from beginner walk trot to speedy barrel racing to slow hunter jumpers. So far, we have done a spectacular horse show at our barn. We look forward to more exciting events like fundraisers, fundraisers, and learning activities dealing with horses. Thank you for your, for this opportunity and support. Have a great evening.
Thank you, ladies. Anyone from your club?
Hi, my name is Taylor Norville, and I'm the President of Happy Hams 4-H Club. Every year, we volunteer for mustard seed. We get ready for their Thanksgiving dinner, or yeah. And we adopt a family every year for Christmas. And we just want to thank you for all the support you give to all of our 4-H clubs.
Thank you so much, Taylor. Happy Hams, I see you back in the corner there. Hey, guys. I like the size difference. Is that like a pre-reck?
Good evening. My name is Wyatt Wills.
Hi, my name is Matthew Bergeron.
And I am the President of Southern Swine's 4-H Club. I would just like to give a big thank you to all the county commissioners for your continued support of our local 4-H program. This educates and enriches our growing community and youth. We've been working extra hard on our fundraisers and community services. Just this past weekend, we had a barbecue slash car wash fundraiser. And coming up this December, we are making Christmas cards and delivering them to a local nursing home. Thank you once again for everything you do for all of us 4-Hers.
I am the reporter this year for Southern Swine's 4-H Club. We want to wish each of you and your family happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Erin Barbova, Vice President of 4-H District 11. 4-H District 11 is comprised of Martin, St. Lucie County, and Indian River County 4-Hs. Last summer, we participated in 4-H Congress at University of Florida, the 4-H State Event. We did Share the Fun Fashion Review, and I took home first place in math and technology, illustrated talks. This year, District 11 is planning a day of service at either the Humane Society, Treasure Coast Food Bank, or Habitat for Humanity. District 11 will be meeting at Savannah's Preserve State Park at 10:00 AM December 8th to plan our day of service. All 4-Hers ages 11 and up are welcome to come. Thank you and happy holidays from District 11.
Anybody from District 11 here? Anybody from your club here?
Pretty much everybody is from District 11.
That's it, that's the whole district. That's it, that's the whole district. You got it. Thank you, Sue, so much. We really appreciate everything. Round of applause for everybody here. Thank you for coming. You know, and by the way, I know it's a busy night, everything's going on with school, but we really appreciate you all coming every year. We love what's going on with 4H. It's always exciting to see the leaders that are up and coming. I'm always impressed by some of you as well that have your speeches memorized. I don't know how you do it. It's neat to see that and it's always fun to just see your excitement because we know you love what you're doing. So thank you again for coming. We'll take a two-minute break so that way everybody has time to be able to filter out. Thank you. Come back to order. Thank you for your patience. That was wonderful, wasn't it? Nice to have that great group of students here. Today, we're going to move on to Item B. County Attorney, we have Resolution Number 12-225 recognizing December 7th, 2012 as the 71st anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day in St. Lucie County. Ms. Clerk, would you please read the roll or read the resolution?
Yes, sir. Resolution Number 12-225, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, recognizing Friday, excuse me, recognizing December 7th, 2012 as the 71st anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day in St. Lucie County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determination. On December 7th, 1941, a surprise air attack against the base of the United States Pacific Fleet located at Pearl Harbor, Oahu, Hawaiian Islands, took place by the Japanese Naval Air Forces. As a result of this unexpected invasion, President Franklin D. Roosevelt, on December 8th, 1941, appeared before a joint session of Congress and called for a declaration of war against the Japanese Empire. The casualties of the devastating attack on Pearl Harbor were calculated at over 2,400 deaths with almost 1,200 wounded men, along with the sinking of three battleships, the capsizing of one battleship, and varying degrees of damage to four other battleships. Several smaller warships were sunk and others were seriously crippled as a result of this attack and almost all combat aircraft on the islands were damaged or destroyed. In honor of the courageous efforts of the men who died for their country at Pearl Harbor as well as the men who fought and survived this tragic episode, this board would like to remember by recognizing the 71st anniversary of Pearl Harbor on Friday, December 7th, 2012. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, Friday, December 7th, 2012, is hereby recognized as the 71st anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day in St. Lucie County, Florida. This board urges all citizens to join together on Friday, December 7th, 2012, in remembering those Americans who lost their lives for this country, along with those who survived the attack on Pearl Harbor on that dreadful morning on December 7th, 1941, passed and duly adopted this fourth day of December, 2012.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Bearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. With that, we have Mr. Rob Nevshield and I think he's going to come up. Would you like to say anything first?
Yes, of course, please.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Board of County Commissioners. As always, it's a pleasure for me to come here and meet with you and accept all the wonderful proclamations and, and the things that you do for the veterans community. I'm here tonight representing the United Veterans of St. Lucie County. That encompasses all the veterans groups in Fort Pierce and Fort St. Lucie. We have a wonderful group of people and they work very hard for our community. Our primary efforts are geared to providing the vans that transport our veterans to West Palm Beach for their medical point. But listening to the proclamation, it, it just, it boggles the mind. And I know you've all seen the films on TV many times, but the end result of that war was over 400,000 men and women, brave men and women, who didn't come home. So our veterans in Fort Pierce and Fort St. Lucie take it upon ourselves every year to honor those men and women with a brief ceremony. In Fort Pierce this year, it will be held at 11 o'clock. In Fort St. Lucie, it'll be at 0755. You can believe me when I tell you it's hard to get a lot of people to come out that early in the morning. But we think it's important and we shall continue to do it. And with your help, it'll keep on a tradition here in our county.
And Ron, the one in Fort Pierce is at the veterans community?
Yes.
Off of Indian River Drive?
Mm-hmm.
And then the other one is in Fort St. Lucie?
In Fort St. Lucie, at what's called the Old Veterans Park. It's where the boat ramps are and we have a memorial right at the entrance and that's where we do our ceremony.
Right down the street from the current memorial?
Almost straight across from the post office.
Want to make sure everybody can get?
Well, if you can make one of the services, I encourage you to do it because we're losing these, these men and women so rapidly. And still, those that are able, they show up. So thank you very much.
With that, we have a resolution for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, that closes our proclamations and presentations. We'll be turning to general public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board, please do so. If you wouldn't mind providing your name and address for the record, we would appreciate it.
Excuse me. Mr. Chair, County Commissioners, County Administrator, and Chair. He does a good job for you guys. I don't have much to say tonight, but you know, when you think your society's...
Name for the record?
I'm sorry. You guys don't know me?
No, no, we...
Okay, my name is George M. Baker. I live in Fort St. Lucie. And in the county. Did I miss anything?
You're excellent.
Okay. I don't like public speaking, you know? I don't like that. You know, when you think our society's going down the tubes, look at these young people. That's the backbone of our society and you know, they deserve a lot of credit, the kids, the parents, and everybody else, all the youth groups who really do. Anyway, I don't want to get on a sub box here, but you know, I'm an outdoor person, I'm an animal lover and all these kind of things. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. When I see somebody out walking a dog, the first thing I say to them is, have you ever taken your dog to Dog Beach? And they look at me and they say, well, where's Dog Beach? Well, it's Walton Rocks in case anybody doesn't know it. It's one of the few access that we have in this county where your dog can socialize and swim and all these other things. Don't take your dog there during the mullet runs and if you see birds feeding, take them out of the water, but it's a great place for dogs and it's, it took a long time to get it, but we finally did. And Commissioners deserve credit for that. Okay, I want to talk about parks and recreation and environmental people. I don't know if you people go to a lot of places. I do. I go to a lot of different places. But anyway, if you ever get the chance, go down Okeechobee Road, go under, go past all that mess out there and go to Gordy Road. If you go down there, there's a preserve down there that is fantastic. It's, there's a lot of picnic tables. You can park in there, you can have lunch, you can walk nature trails, and we don't use it as we should. We use, and you know, same thing, folks, garbage in, garbage out. If you don't like that place, go on a little farther and there's a park down there where they have Thursday golf and they have toilets and they have a beautiful lake down there and we're not using these things that are free to our children. Get your kids out there, get away from the televisions, get part of our society. Get out there, you're probably running to me out there and I only know three people in the group and that's Karen Smith and Amy back there and Kenny. But they're doing a fantastic job. Right now, La Strange is under construction. Give them a little bit of time. Road and Bridges is doing the road. It's going to be a fantastic park. Take advantage of it. There is, I can't say anymore about it than other than that, it's fantastic. It's going to be great. Get your kids out of the house, get them out there, take a picnic lunch and enjoy our free society, you might call it that. And I don't think I missed anything, but there is a place that's kind of kept secret on Salvage Road there that I think it's the Becker property. They said it's going to be another fantastic park and they're working hard on that. So we have all these things available to us. It's a shame we don't see people out there. I'm just encouraging people to take advantage of this free opportunity to go out and enjoy what's there and there's a lot of it out there. And I don't think I got anything else to say because I get a little nervous up here talking. Oh, listen, this is something that, you know, we had a space program a lot of years ago and I'm just saying this as a little story. We sent Allo Shepherd down Rains on a suborbital flight and then we sent Gus Grissom and then we sent Glenn, John Glenn, he's circle of the earth. Well, you know, if our space program and our government had said, well, folks, this is good enough, let's quit now, we'd never put a man on the moon. But my advice to everybody here is we can do better, we can build a better mousetrap, we just need to look a little bit ahead of ourselves and remember one thing, I'm not counting me, but there's a lot of old people out here that's got a lot of intelligence and a lot of experience and all you gotta do is ask them. Okay? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, as always. I enjoy just hearing his voice. I feel like I could be sitting at home and, I don't know, sitting around a fireplace.
He's our best tourist development director in all of St. Lucie County.
He is. He is. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner Mowry. John Arena, Fort Pierce. The word sand, according to the National Institute of Standards and Technology, refers to the size of the particles. The next smaller size is silt. Silt grains are a fraction of the size of sand. From time to time, I have taken samples of the sand you have been buying for South Beach. Silt is about halfway between the size of a sand particle and powder. It is easily lifted into the water and washed away. You have been paying the price for sand and the beach has been getting truckloads of silt. Due to our inlet to the sea, we have a lot of white noses, or as I also call them cocaine monkeys, in our area. While Tim Zuck, a Republican, was running for county commission in Indian River County, he ran on a platform of restoring the Indian River Lagoon. He is now a county commissioner. A Colorado recycling facility accepts old political signs, then bails them... facility accepts old political signs, then bails them and sends them out for further processing. Our Indian River Lagoon, Five Acre Spoil Island in North County, has been refurbished by volunteers and state agencies, and is now truly a park, complete with picnic tables and a wooden bridge. It makes a nice destination for kayaking and canoeing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arena. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. We've spent a lot of time together the last month or so.
We sure have.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and particularly Ms. Outlaw, thank you very much for allowing me to come. I, we had a bit of a, my name is Charlie Wilson, by the way. And I was born in Fort Pierce, but I'm currently living in Vero Beach. Um, and we, I had asked for time on the agenda, and we had some miscommunications. And thank you for allowing me to come up in public comment. I will try not to, uh, abuse a privilege if I happen to run over a couple of minutes. I've got two things that I wanted to bring to the attention, um, actually three, counting the, all the people that spoke earlier, uh, all the 4-H people. I want you all to know that they will replace all of you someday. Especially the gentleman from whatever the robotics is. He has your number, Todd.
He was amazing. I tell you.
So, you got about 20 years and you're out of here, you know?
Yeah.
So, um, there are two reasons that I wanted to come. First of all, is, is I've done a lot of campaigns in my lifetime, probably 50 of them. It's been my business for many years. I've been in a number of recounts, three of them, uh, just recently, and I'm pretty familiar with the whole process. Um, I want you to know, and one of the reasons I'm here, first of all, is I want you to know that your canvassing board was the best I've ever seen. You, you have real heroes in this community in that canvassing board. Sometimes it's fun to be a Commissioner. That wasn't one of the times, being the, being on that canvassing board. I want to, I want to especially thank, uh, Mark, I think his last name is Tram? Is that what his last name is? Uh, the gentleman?
McCurtis, yes.
Okay. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly. He spent probably the most time in and out of the, uh, of the canvassing board over the 12 days, uh, that we were having this, some difficulties. Uh, I also want to thank, uh, Judge Yacucci, and particularly, and Judge Walsh. But, most specifically, most, most particularly Catherine Nelson. Judge Nelson just did a splendid job. All of you did. Um, I, I, a lot of campaigns that I do are judges racist, and I didn't happen to do hers. But, I was talking to another judge friend of mine in Vero Beach, and I said, "I'd really like to do something nice for Catherine, since she works so hard." I said, "If I, if I send a nice letter to the chief judge, will she get frequent flyer miles or something?" And she, he said, "No." He said, "The only, only thing that'll probably happen is she'll get stuck with the canvassing board again." So, um, so the best thing I can do for Catherine Nelson right now is to just say thanks and not mention her name ever again, uh, if I want to be very helpful. Um, but, I want to, I want to say the very highest accolades from a person that has, I stay out of, uh, St. Lucie County politics, and for somebody who has no axe to grind or, or anything to do with St. Lucie County politics, other than my relative was, uh, installed as mayor of Fort Pierce, uh, guest last night. Um, you wouldn't know it because the newspaper didn't cover it, but, yeah, she was. Um, I'd, I'd like to, to thank particularly Todd Mallory. I have never seen a more dedicated public servant that gave so much time with so much patience, trying to explain a very difficult situation with a crowd of people who were skeptical, tired, and angry. It could have been a lot worse. And I want the public to know, and I want your fellow Commissioners to know, that there was no better person to be in that position at that time, other than you. And I want to thank you, uh, on behalf of, uh, some of the people that, that I care about, that, and for the public in general, that you were simply splendid. So, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Now, having said that, you know, they tell, they say, um, praise loudly and criticize softly. Is that what they do? So, uh, I, there is, there are a couple of things that we probably need to talk about, about this election, because we can't sweep it under the rug. Uh, the election and the recount, all of a sudden, became an extension of a very contentious election, which was too bad, because it was really much more than that. It had to do with the sanctity of the vote. This is not about Gertrude Walker. I've known Gertrude Walker for 30 years. And I was concerned about her health, and I'm still concerned about her health. And, and, uh, I, uh, I, I'm not here to pick on Gertrude Walker. There's going to be, the state's going to be looking at this. Uh, we now know that the Secretary of State's going to be visiting our community in the next few weeks. They're going to be having a hearing before Judge, or, sorry, Senator Latvella's Senate Committee on the 14th of January, which I plan to attend. Uh, he's asked me to do that, um, because of some of the issues that have come up. Um, but I, you can't minimize what happened. And I'll give you an example. Linda Hudson was, at the end of the, at the end of election night, was 16 votes behind. An hour later, she was five votes behind. The next day, uh, she was 16 votes behind. Then she was 21 votes behind. And at that point, if there had been another 47 votes behind, she would have been behind 68 votes, which would have negated a recount. So, it was not necessarily by great wisdom that we dodged a bullet, that, um, in this case, bye. In this case, um, we, we could very well have, have seated and the, uh, a person that was not actually elected as mayor. Uh, I spoke with Commissioner Zdowski, uh, just briefly, and one of the concerns was whether there was additional money, whether the, whether the problem was money, uh, whether the county commission failed to provide enough resources for Gertrude Walker. And I want you to know, that is not the case. That is not the case. It's not this county commission's fault. It was a surprise to no one. I have a radio show and a blog that I do, is in addition to some of the other things that I do. And a month in advance, I wrote a blog that said, "Watch out for St. Lucie County, because they are going to be the epicenter of difficulties with the election." You could have seen it coming a mile away. I met with the newspapers, the editorial board, to explain to them what was getting ready to happen. So, it is not something that came as a surprise. And let me tell you what did happen. Before the vote, there were list inaccuracies, um, supplied to the candidates. The lists that we were able to receive to campaign from, we found inaccuracies, including one list that missed 1,000 people on the list, partially because of, of partial precincts. Now, um, some people are difficulty, they still have difficulty in the list. We have two people that have been, not been in residence for over 10 years. And they are still on the list as active voters. During the, uh, there was no redistricting for 20 years. We learned that the city of Fort Pierce was supposed to be redistricted every 10 years. It went 20 years without redistricting. And we brought it up to them. And that's what caused, uh, they had to make some changes in the precincts. The early voting locations were inaccessible to many. And you can see from the results of the elections, that some were unable, unable, to utilize early voting because of the lack of locations and the location of the locations. During the vote, you had a rogue location. You had felons voting, uh, particularly at the Neil Hurston Library. During the recount, you'll recall that Gertrude Walker, we brought it up, that there are felons voting. Gertrude Walker said that she had found 22. And that some of them had had their rights restored, but some had not. We are, so far, are up to 40. Now, I don't know if those have been reported to law enforcement, but they were supposed to be. Um, we had illegal activity of every kind. I don't believe there is a single election law ever written that was not broken at the Neil Hurston Library. You have, uh, politics within 100 feet. You have palm cards. You have, uh, consideration for votes. There's even a report that there was a county van, a recreation van, used to transport people. I haven't, I can't confirm that vote, but I can, uh, that particular report, but I can confirm many. You had soliciting for assistance for people who did not need assistance. And you had unreported expenditures with paid people working that were going in and out of the polls. You had, during the vote count, you had no early tabulation. You know what the real problem was? You didn't start voting, counting the early votes until 5 o'clock on election night. We should have known, if you knew the technology, you should have known that those machines are not able to count 37,000 ballots between 5 o'clock and the time that the ballots had to be reported. It just simply is not capable, the machines. You should have started your count, like most other people did, either on, uh, the previous week. The absentees can be counted the previous week. But, most counties, including Indian River, counted on Monday. And the reason that you had, and that's one of the reasons I feel sorry for Gertrude, because I've been in that situation where you make a mistake, and every time you try to correct the mistake, it just makes it worse and makes it bigger. And that's what happened here. You had training issues. Uh, Commissioner Zdowski brought up to me, that's correctly, that you are not cross-trained. Your IET people in the county should be able to cross-train and assist the supervisor of elections. You didn't have that. In fact, you had 33% failure in your cards, six out of 18. 33% in early voting. Now, that was probably due, nothing nefarious, it was probably due to the person that was trained to do that. The machines broke out in the field, and they were out in the field fixing those machines. His assistant, who was probably less trained, nicest fellow in the world, I'm not picking on him, but less trained, formatted the discs. Okay? So, what you had is you had a failure rate of 33%, far higher than anyplace else. Uh, you had mixed boxes. You had double counts of 1,900, uh, I'm sorry, 3,500 votes, and no count, because you didn't have any inventory system, of 1,900 votes. You, you're missing polling books. I hope they've been found. But, it was announced at the final day that polling books were missing. You will never be able to tally, because you'll never be able to balance those and have those checks and balances that Commissioner Mallory so eloquently explained to the people that were in the room. Uh, they're missing. I hope they're found. Um, but there are simple solutions. I'm almost done. There are simple solutions. Need deeper, deeper technical training. This is not called money. Deeper technical training. Need a simple checklist. Have you counted the write-in ballots? Have you counted the provisional ballots? Have you counted each location? Uh, those things kind of went by memory. And that was the 306 ballots that were missing, because we forgot to count the rest of the ballots that were on the write-ins. A simple checklist, 25 cents of checklist would fix that problem.
Charlie, just bow it up here. Just bowed it up with time.
All right. Um, let me, there are solutions. Uh, you have a major problem. And you need to, uh, and, and you need to concentrate on them. Uh, the, the good is, let me say this, this, the employees of the supervisor of elections office work diligently and, and hard in their difficult circumstances to try to correct this problem. I hope you have a workshop before all these things go to, to, uh, the state senate and to the Secretary of State, because I think you need to know what some of these things are. The canvassing board prevented chaos. And should be, uh, my hat's off, there's a lot more information that you need to know. Otherwise, you're going to have this problem again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zdowski.
Mr. Wilson, um, you seem to have a list. Would you mind providing my office with that list? Just email it to me, and I'd appreciate that.
I would be happy to do that. And it will take less than five minutes.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your comments. There were a lot of items that were brought up. I think a lot of those items, there were, as I used to call them during the election process, phantoms. There were certain items that were brought up. Even the issue on the absentees and the early votes, those weren't actually hand-counted. They were actually machine-counted. The machine, all it is, is you just put the card in, and almost every county in the state does the same thing, even on election day. Indian River County noticed the day before. And that's, it's not a, a process of whether they have to go through the, through counting those. It so happens that when they uploaded those, they didn't fully upload it, which is why they had to do a recount. And they did it on election day, because they knew people didn't want to wait until two, three, four days afterwards. And so, that was the difference with that. So-
Thank you. They were slow to report that, though.
I'm sorry?
They were slow to report that. They, they, if, if they had been upfront with the canvassing board-
Again, yeah. And Charlie, I'm, I'm just helping re-provide some of those things, because again, that's, I think, how some of the rumors sort of start, that they were machine, or that they were hand-counting, you know, votes. And that isn't the case. It was the fact that clearly, they went to upload the votes. It didn't happen the way they had hoped on election day. And in some ways, it's sort of the purity of the process, the fact that it's not until election day that the supervisor's uploading hers. That's the way she's done it forever. It just so happens, this time, they had a problem with the cards. But, thank you again for that. And if you wouldn't mind providing those comments back to us, we'd appreciate it.
I will. If it weren't for your patience, then it would have been a lot worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Grandi.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Charles Grandi, Governing Board, Hibiscus Children's Center. It's December, and it's, every December, it's always great to see so many kids from supportive homes in 4-H, giving back to the community. As you all know, through its children's shelter and its group homes for teens, and its foster parenting programs, Hibiscus serves the abused, abandoned, and neglected kids in our community. The kids that fall between the cracks. The reason I'm here tonight is, uh, to remind everybody in the county that this Saturday, Saturday morning, is the Second Annual Hibiscus Children's Center Golf Tournament. And there are available slots for players and foursomes who would like to come out. The unique part of this tournament is, every player who plays also gets a certificate for another free round on the day of his choice. You won't find that in many, uh, places. If you're interested, uh, you can call Kim at Hibiscus at 772-340-5750. And Hibiscus is located right down the block on 25th Street, just off Edwards. Uh, the tournament is Saturday morning at, uh, 7:30 for breakfast, 8:30 for tea time, lunches served, prizes. And I want to especially thank my good friend and our newest Commissioner, Tim Johnson, who is going to be one of the players Saturday. Woo! So, thank you all.
Do they provide helmets?
You know, there was a comment made earlier about me playing like Tiger Woods. I would say, I will be playing the ball in the woods, unlike Tiger Woods. But, um-
Thank you anyway, Tiger.
Any chance, yeah. And any chance I get a chance to spend with you, Commissioner Grandi, former Commissioner Grandi, uh, it's a pleasure, and I appreciate you for showing up tonight.
Anytime we can spend for the kids is a pleasure.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board this evening? Seeing no movement, we'll return to the board. Or, if you don't mind, I'd actually like to have us recess for a minute and have us go into mosquito control, changing the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll come to order as the mosquito control district. First item of business is, I guess we don't have a set of minutes. First order of business, we general public comment. Anyone wishing to address the mosquito control district? I don't think she's coming up. Okay. Uh, we'll see, no movement. We'll come back to the board. There's a consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion. Motion is second. Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come back to order. Mr. Board of County Commissioners, with that, is there an item that any Commission would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put it on the record that I'll be abstaining from warrants list eight and nine.
Is there a motion to approve warrants list eight and nine at this point?
Go move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried with the note that Commissioner Hutchison was abstaining. Any other item on the consent agenda?
Move approval of remaining consent agenda items.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, staff. Turn to item seven, public hearings. First off, Planning and Development Services. See staff making their way forward. With that, we'll start with Planning Division. This will be United Pentecostal Fire Ministries. This is a change in zoning for 202 East Midway Road. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Mallory. Diana Waite, for the record, presenting staff comments. This, um, item, as you indicated, is a petition of United Pentecostal Fire Ministries. It's for a change in zoning from the RS2 Residential Single Family Zoning District to the Institutional Zoning District. And the change in zoning is proposed to allow for the establishment of a church on the property. The, uh, item is a public hearing, and proof of the advertisements required mailing those may be found in your package. A picture of the sign on the property is shown on your screen. No public comments have been received to date. The, um, parcel is .92 acres and is located approximately one mile east of US Highway 1 on the north side of East Midway Road. It's two lots west of Buchanan Drive. The, uh, parcel and the surrounding lands are within a residential urban future land use area, except for an RM residential medium land use designation to the west. The, uh, zoning districts surrounding the parcel are RS2 or RS3 residential single family and institutional. The existing land uses are predominantly residential with a church adjacent to the east. Uh, the church to the east does have the same designation as the requested, um, petition. Do other industrial or institutional zone parcels or- Two other industrial or institutional zone parcels are found between the petition parcel and US One. Adjacent land uses include primarily single-family homes to the north and west. A canal, an eighty-foot canal is located to the west between the single-family home across the canal. And the previous mentioned religious facility locate, is located to the east. This is a view of the subject parcel from Buchanan Street south of Midway Road. And this is a picture of the adjacent church and the roadwork that was going on at the Staff has reviewed the petition and has determined it is not in conflict with the goals and objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan, including Policy one-one-eight-four that allows limited commercial non-residential uses in areas classified for residential The proposed petition meets the standards. The petition also conforms to the standards of review for zoning amendments sent forth in section eleven-oh-six of the County Land Development Code. At the October eighteenth public hearing on this matter, the St. Lucie County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request, request petition by a vote of eight to zero. No public comments were made regarding the proposed rezoning, and the applicant and the representatives were in attendance to address the commission. In conclusion, staff recommends the board adopt Resolution number twelve-one-one-eight, granting approval to the request of United Pentecostal Fire Ministries' change in zoning from RS2 to institutional. Thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Waite. Any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick one, well, two, one comment and one question. Comment meaning this is a quasi-judicial and for the record, I have not spoke with anyone in regards to this.
And what we'll actually do is we'll ask for any quasi-judicial disclosures prior to each public hearing on it. That way, in case anybody has a question about meetings that we may have had, if we've had any of these items, they'll know that prior to the public hearing portion.
Okay, I wasn't sure when you were going to request that. The second, my other question is, in some of the backup, I noticed that there's a comment that they're going to be required, which I have no problem with, the installation of a sidewalk, but are we not currently putting sidewalks out there already?
The sidewalk construction is going to be terminating just east of this parcel on Buchanan. From there, it goes north to the, I believe it's an elementary school up on Weatherby Road.
Okay, there was a lot of construction out there today when I was out in that area for another reason, and that's why I was asking, because I looked like they were going right in front of that parcel.
It did. And I asked our engineering division about that and they were doing some drainage improvements as part of that project in front of this parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? This is a quasi-judicial item. Anyone having any disclosures to make, please do so at this time?
I've met with no one.
Met with no one as well?
No one.
No other disclosures to make? Great. Mike McCarty, I believe you're the agent, would you like to provide some comments?
Sure. Good evening, Mike McCarty with McCarty and Associates Land Planning and Design. Happy holidays, everyone. Appreciate the time to be with you this evening. Make this very brief, it's been a pleasure working with staff. They've done a great job and pretty much touched all the justifications for the rezon of this property. I'll just kind of summarize a couple items here. The midway corridor has changed considerably over the last two decades. This area primarily consisted of residential uses fronting on Midway Road. Over the years, many of the once single-family residential lots are now converting to other uses more suitable to be located along this arterial corridor to meet the demand and needs for the thousands of residents in the immediate area. Over the years, a number of the uses have changed along the corridor. Some of these uses consist of institutional, professional services, professional office, excuse me, religious organizations, emergency services, and commercial. The proposed zoning change is consistent with the development trend in the area and the proposed zoning change is consistent with the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan of St. Lucie County. Project will not have an adverse effect on the public facilities as it is a low-impact use. This time, we are requesting a deferral of public facilities reservation till submission of the site plan application. We just would respectfully request that you approve this change in zoning and welcome the United Pentecostal Fire Ministries to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing no one at this time, it is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board, please do so. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing and return to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one more question for our staff. Ms. Waite, was there any issue with easements? Because I know that midway, over time, will probably widen. Is there any, there's no issue with that, is there?
There is not, and I believe we have a sufficient right-of-way for that section. And I'm looking at our county surveyor. I believe I touched base with him on that, and so I, I believe that's what I was told. He'll need to confirm.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, for the record, Ron Harris County Surveyor. Yes, we do have adequate right-of-way. And to, we could not request right-of-way during a rezoning anyway. There's no conditions on rezoning.
Okay, I just had a concern that going forward, that, you know, we'll have another bite at the apple to have that taken, that consideration reviewed.
We would take a second look at it, as with the sidewalk and everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second motion.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. That would turn to item B, Planning and Development Services. Carol Collins Future Land Use Map Amendment. This is at the northeast corner of South Twenty-Fifth Street and Edwards Road. Again, Ms. Waite?
Yes, I'll take this item as well. This and the next item are two items that were concurrent applications submitted by Carol Collins. Mr. Collins is requesting a small-scale Future Land Use Map Amendment from residential medium to commercial and a change in zoning from the commercial neighborhood zoning district to the commercial general zoning district. Although these two applications require a separate vote, they will be presented and discussed simultaneously. Both of these items are public hearings and proof of the required public notice items may be found in your package. Staff has been contacted by one member of the public that objected to the proposed petition based upon concerns related to potential negative visual and economic impacts. That member is here tonight to speak to you. The purpose of the applications is to allow additional retail uses on a one-point-three-nine acre parcel located on the northeast corner of South Twenty-Fifth Street and Edwards Road. The applicant has indicated they intend to establish a used auto vehicle and boat dealership on the property. The uses surrounding the subject parcel include the Laurel Office Park Complex to the north and Carol Collins Pond Shop located immediately east. Both of these are within the city limits of Fort Pierce. A convenience store and gas station is located across Edwards Road to the south and there is also a convenience store and gas station located across South Twenty-Fifth Street to the west. To the southwest is an undeveloped thirty-five acre tract. Future land use designations surrounding the parcel are predominantly residential with a residential medium designation of the subject parcel found on the parcel to the southwest of the subject, to the southwest and on the adjacent city of Fort Pierce parcels. Residential urban is found to the south across Edwards Road and commercial, the requested designation, is found directly west of South Twenty-Fifth Street. For a little bit of background, there's been several land use changes at this intersection area within the last ten years and the commercial land use designations on the, that reduced the commercial land use designations on the west side of South Twenty-Fifth Street. In two thousand and five and two thousand and six, the majority of those lands received future land use map amendments from commercial to a residential designation. Today, the thirty-five acre parcel on the southwest corner of the intersection is approved for the Sedona PUD, a three-hundred-and-eighteen-unit residential project. The undevelopment lands on the north side of Edwards Road and west of Twenty-Fifth Street extending to Five Mile Creek, except for the existing gas station, are owned by the Indian River State College and proposed for future parking garages and a business park, which would convert the proposed use back to a non-residential use. The zoning districts surrounding the parcel are commercial neighborhood, commercial general, and the city of Fort Pierce zoning districts C-one and C-two. The city zoning districts are similar to the county's commercial neighborhood and commercial office uses that are allowed in our residential urban areas. View, see, this is a, at the, a view of the parcel, South Twenty-Fifth Street frontage. And at the October eighteenth public hearing on the matter, the St. Lucie County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request of Future Land Use Map Amendment by a vote of eight to zero. And at the same meeting, they recommended denial of the change in zoning by a vote of five to three, with the request that the applicant revise their application from a request for commercial general zoning to PNRD zoning. One member of the public appeared to object to the petition and is here to speak to you tonight. The applicant also appeared at the public hearing and submitted ten forms signed by residents in the surrounding area that were in support of the proposed change. Another two forms in favor of the two proposed changes were provided yesterday. At that public hearing, the applicant indicated their intent to sell used vehicles that would be obtained through the adjacent Collins Pond Shop within the city of Fort Pierce. Therefore, a new building would need to be constructed on the subject parcel if rezoned. The city of Fort Pierce staff has also indicated that the proposed county commercial future land use does not appear to be consistent with the surrounding land uses to the east of Twenty-Fifth Street, where there are mostly residential with some low-intensity commercial land uses. Prior to this hearing, staff met with the applicant to discuss the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation of changing their application to a PNRD. The applicant at that time concluded that they would move forward with this pending request for commercial general. In staff's review of the petition, we did determine that it is not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. The specific policies related to this petition include a future land use policy requiring the amendment parcel to be within a quarter-mile, the same designation, and ability to connect to water and wastewater services. The petition meets that provision. As required by transportation policy two-point-one-one, the applicant did provide a report of the transportation impacts as a result of the petition. And that was presented in your packet for your consideration. The transportation summary is discussed within the staff report and shows no existing or potential deficiencies or conflicts that would result, as a result of the amendments. Applicable to both petitions is a future land use policy that provides specific standards to be utilized in determining the suitability of new property for designation of commercial general. The parcel meets these standards. And that includes a standard that would require one acre in size, which the parcel meets, as well as central water services and a distance from aquatic preserves or other designated aquatic habitat. And that it have immediate access to the regional transportation facility, and that parcel does meet those items. In conclusion, staff has found that the proposed change is not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies as set forth in the county's comprehensive plan and is in compliance with the Land Development Code standards of review. And we recommend that both petitions be approved.
Thank you, Ms. Waite. Before we turn to that, just as an aside, realizing that we also have a new member on our board, like to make sure that we also help, make sure that he's fully able to do his part as we move through this. If we don't mind, just for a moment, Mr. McIntyre, would you mind just giving a brief overview as to the approval process from a legal standpoint, so that it's a refresher to the public as well as a help to Mr. Johnson, as we talk about approvals for both future land use as well as zoning requests and how they're to be made?
Right. Just generally, Commissioners, there is in the comprehensive plan a future land use element, a future land use map. It is one of the, it's actually item B is a proposal to change that, that map, currently from residential medium, which would allow nine units per acre, to a commercial, a general land use category. In addition to that, though that's not the only thing that typically needs to be changed, is there's a zoning map, which is in the Land Development Code, or the procedure is to change that. That is also a public hearing, but separate. They have different standards of review, although they're somewhat similar. The zoning has to be consistent with the land use. You can't, you should really have, they have to be consistent. Under the state laws that exist now, if the applicant requests, the land use and the zoning have to be held concurrently. In addition to that, there are quasi-judicial hearings, which would require you to disclose any contact outside of this hearing. In other words, if you met with the applicant, or the neighbors, or an objector, and you've already heard that, you would need to disclose that on the record. That's typically done before the hearing process is completed. The reason for that is it gives the public, or anybody, the opportunity to ask questions about that, that contact, to make sure that they understand what was said, or, that would include even a site visit, if you visited the site and had a discussion, those kinds of things would be appropriate to enter into the record.
And finally, as it relates to determinations to deny or to approve, and the fact of relating that to the record?
Right. There are standards of review that have to be met. Typically, there'll be a staff recommendation, as there is in this case. I think particularly in the case of a denial, but also in the, in the case of an approval, it's important to give reasons on the record as to why you're approving or particularly denying it. That's particularly helpful if there's a challenge, because what, what the court's going to be looking at is the record that's in front of the board. They're not, the court's not going to be able to look at other things that are outside the record. They're going to be looking at the documents and the testimony that's in front of the board. So it's, it's important to state for the record reasons, and particularly in the case of a denial, because, or really any, any type of, but denial are particularly important, I think. Commissioner, I don't know if I've handled all the questions.
That's good, because generally, again, if a denial is proposed, it shouldn't be denied just because I don't like the applicant, or I don't like this. It's, it needs to be specifically tied to those standards of review that have been provided within.
Right. There are standards in the packet, you'll see the standards of review, and those are the standards that staff looks at, and that's the standards that a court would look at if they were reviewing whatever action the board took.
Thank you for that extra time. With that, are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Waite, this property, is it not contiguous to the city of Fort Pierce on two out of four sides? Is that accurate?
Two sides, yes. Actually, it's only got two parcel adjacent to it, immediately adjacent to it, and they're both within the city of Fort Pierce.
Okay, so they are.
And I'll go back to the map.
On the north and the east side.
Right.
Correct. And also, I have a document in the backup that indicates that the city of Fort Pierce has objected to the, the position that it's, meets their comprehensive code. Is that accurate?
That's correct. They, they objected that it's, based on the fact that it's not consistent with the primary residential nature of the surrounding area.
Mr. Sadley?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mark Satterley, Planning and Development Services. Just a little bit of clarification. We received an email correspondence from one of the staff people at the City of Fort Pierce. And I haven't had any other contact with, you know, the administration, or, you know, the politicians as to whether, you know, they were objecting. So, you know, I didn't want it to sound like the entire city was objecting, but there was some concerns raised by one of the staff people.
Well, that actually leads me to more to a position that, you know, we probably should have that official response from the city, either from the planning director and/or the mayor, with a position from their, from their commission.
Yeah, they were, they were provided the opportunity, and this was, this was all we got from them.
So, there was no, there was no hearing in the City of Fort Pierce on this issue?
No, there wouldn't be a hearing, since it's not within the city limits.
Well, I understand that, but we have been trying, from the county's perspective, because we have so many situations within the City of Fort Pierce where county and city annexations come close and come together, that we have been trying to meet the objects of the city, so that as they continue to annex and they create their city, that it is the vision of what they have wanted to happen. And that's why I'm asking these questions, because I think that we probably should have a little more input, especially from their planning director, with some consensus of their, of their commission. That's just my point there.
I think collaboration is always a good thing to have. I know the city is within a transition within their director right now, as he's now leaving and moving on, and now they're back to, it looks as though David Carlin has now been appointed as their new zoning director. So that will be at least a change for that. But I think the idea of collaborating is a nice idea, and I know that county and the city actually have had a process that began several years ago, where they were doing a lot of cross-examination. The county invited city staff to come in, city staff invited county staff to come in and look through their reviews to go through that process.
And that's exactly right, and we do correspond frequently. We are all invited to each other's technical advisory committees. And I believe Mr. Harris sits on one of the committees, so we're reviewing each other's projects.
I think also, I think you made a good point, Mr. Chairman, that Commissioner Johnson is new to this board, and also the City of Fort Pierce has a new mayor. And if the mayor hasn't chimed in on, you know, what may be a property that they'll annex very soon, I think it's reasonable to, you know, have this go to the city, at least our staff. To see us proceed on this. I mean, we could just make a unilateral move today without having that conversation or having the input from a new mayor. I think we heard earlier that that was a contentious race. It was something of great importance to the City of Fort Pierce. And I think that it's just reasonable, if we can, I don't know that there's anything pushing this thing quickly, that we couldn't have a couple of weeks or to the next meeting to have that conversation with the City of Fort Pierce.
Thank you for that. One question for Mr. McIntyre. As it relates to the annexation process, realizing that the owner of this property has to request the annexation to occur, the city isn't able to just take that property unless they have agreements through their utility provisions. But in this, generally, I believe the case is that as property goes into the city, they apply their land use, they apply zoning to it, generally that's consistent with whatever was provided from the county's standpoint, although I would assume they do have the option of placing a different land use and a different zoning on that, that may be contrary to what is currently provided from the county's perspective.
Right. Actually, I think when they're, if and when the property gets annexed, it retains the county land use and zoning until it's changed by the city. So they, they would have to actually take affirmative action, once it was annexed, to make any changes. I believe that's what the, what the law says. So it doesn't automatically change or morph into something.
No, I guess the point that I was making is that the city, should they not like a particular land use or a particular zoning that we've placed on it, they're not bound to maintain that.
That's correct.
They have the ability through their process, since there actually isn't a state requirement for a specific time period, they could actually keep the county's land use and zoning for many years.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, they could. It would be up to them, once it's annexed. As I understand it, again, the counties would stay in place, but the city could change it, of course, once it, once it gets annexed. And in terms of, I think it's always important to consult with other governmental entities, and particularly when they're close up like this, and I think that's what's being suggested. However, from the board's perspective, the property's in the unincorporated county now, and we need to apply the rules that are in effect now in our county, in the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code, in fairness to the property owner. So while we perhaps need to consult with the city further, that's certainly appropriate if that's what the board wants to do. Ultimately, we need to resolve this by looking at our own rules and regulations.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board for the staff?
I just have one on the, once we go to, if this were to be approved to general commercial, it would require utilities, water, sewer. I'm expecting that to be true. I guess I'll ask you.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Carol Wood, Planning Manager, and I, of course, didn't come up to answer that question. I wanted to just add one more, you know, one more note to consider about the, about the concern about the city's communication, which is that, you know, certainly that's, you know, it's always something that we're very sensitive to, and, you know, in keeping, you know, great relationships between the staff, which I think that we have. The difficulty with this particular communication from the city, from staff's perspective, is that this application was submitted at the beginning of July, and, you know, and transmitted to all the reviewing agencies, which included the city. Unfortunately, we didn't get this communication from the City of Fort Pierce until after the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. So staff had already put together the recommendation, the public hearing had been held, and, you know, and your, and your Planning and Zoning Commission had made their recommendation. So it's just kind of difficult, and, you know, in fairness to the applicant, yes, we have new information, and we're presenting it, you know, to, you know, to you, our board, for that consideration. And yet, our, you know, your staff, we felt that it wouldn't be fair to the applicant to then go back and sort of reanalyze what we thought had been a consistent application, and change our recommendation based on, you know, based on a different analysis. And we, you know, fully acknowledge that, you know, the city staff's analysis is, you know, is valid and has merit, and yet it's just different from the outcome that we had. So I just wanted to sort of put that in perspective of, in terms of the timing of the comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Was there a comment response from staff regarding the utility issue for Commissioner Zdofsky? Do many of the staff happen to know that answer?
The question basically was if it, if it were to be approved to Commercial General, it would be in a category in which water and sewer would be necessary, I imagine, because if you're going to put a bank on there, or.
Correct.
A lawyer's office, or whatever, you're going to have to have, you know, restroom facilities and that type of thing, so.
And at the point that they came in with a site plan, you know, then we would, we would be dealing with the utility issues and where, you know, who, whom would be providing them service.
Which makes my point that without having conversation with the city, I know that, you know, timing is what's been happening, and I want to be fair to the applicant, but I also want to be fair to the city in that, you know, if they are going to, as soon, if this, again, if this were to be approved, that as soon as water and sewer were to be activated on that property, an annexation agreement would occur, and then it would be inconsistent with, at least what I have from the City of Fort Pierce, inconsistent with their complaint, or at least the position of one staff member, and not the mayor or the commissioner's whole.
Yeah, and again, that would be the city's decision to make, you know, whether they would, you know, but, you know, we're here dealing with what is being asked for from us. We don't have a site plan in front of us, and we're not sure when, when is, when is forthcoming. It might be a year or two years. So I, you make a valid point, but, you know, we're just not at that point right now.
And I think that's why I'm having some, you know, heartburn with this, is that to agree to a land use and zoning change without knowing what the ultimate use is going to be. And from what I understood, I'm hearing a, a used car lot. It's certainly not consistent with the properties to the, to the north on the eastern side of 25th, from what I'm seeing. And then also, I understand that a local college is purchasing a large swath of property across the way, which will probably come back to institutional at some point. So, looking at the broader picture, like you said, two years down the road, or three years down the road, I'm not sure consistency is an issue. But I'll sit and listen to the remaining questions from the board.
And that, that's why those are good comments, and I think, again, for Commissioner Johnson's sake, when a land use is placed on a piece of property, they then apply an accompanying zoning district. Whatever uses are allowed in that district, an applicant could provide. And it's at a future point that they'd actually come in with a site plan for that particular piece of property. And as mentioned by Mr. McIntyre, we are unable to condition the zoning and state we'll condition it, condition it to Commercial General only if it's used for a law office. We aren't able to do that, because all of the uses that are allowed within that district could at some point be presented. So when you're considering the use, you're having to consider all the uses that are provided for within that district.
Right.
And there are also conditional uses that, based upon conditions, could be allowed within that district. And that just helps with your consideration. But in this process, they're asking for land use. The second would be the rezoning.
Right.
And then the third would be, they would come back at a future point and bring in a site plan based upon what they would like to do. And that's where you're actually able to really get into a little bit more of the nitty-gritty. And I appreciate Commissioner Zdofsky's comments on that. The board can always decide if they would like to table it. We can do that. At this point, why don't we see if there are any other questions for staff? Seeing no movement with that, is there comments from the applicant that you would like to make at this point? Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Carol, Carol Collins. We've been waiting for this meeting for quite a while. Had a lot of meetings with staff, and they've helped us quite a lot. But if the commission would like to wait two more weeks, we don't really have any problem with that, or three weeks. Excuse me. To the next meeting, we have no problem with that. I would like to state, though, at this time, this is a state highway, 615, running north and south. It's that northern part of St. Lucie County. It goes into federal highway US-1. And we have general commercial across the street. There's six acres that's been rezoned for general commercial directly across the street from us on the corner. South of us, at the main intersection of Midway Road, that's general commercial. Corners are general commercial, both on the east and on the west side. If you go north through Fort Pierce to US-1, you will find all types of businesses. You'll have car dealers, you'll have grocery stores, you'll have all types of general commercial properties going through Fort Pierce, all the way to US-1. It's my feeling, if you want to be business-friendly in St. Lucie County, and you want businesses to come to St. Lucie County, and you want employees to go to work in St. Lucie County, I think you need to take the stand that a major highway, or a state highway, is general commercial. Okay? Now, if someone wants to come build a half a million dollar home out there on a main highway, I have no problem with that. I have no problem with somebody building a home on a main highway. But when somebody wants to do a general commercial project next to their home, I don't think they should be up here complaining about it. So it's up to the commission, you know, if you want to postpone this to the next meeting, again, we have no problem with that whatsoever. Let me just say, we did meet with the City of Fort Pierce. We met with five people in a room, stated to them what we had in mind for this property, and nobody had any objections. So I have no idea. I do want to find out tomorrow, though, who this person is in the City of Fort Pierce that seems to have sent an email over to you that we're not aware of. Because I would like to find out, why did we have this five-person meeting with the City of Fort Pierce, and yet nobody had no problem with us having an auto dealer at that location? And now, all of a sudden, somebody does. So if we want to wait two weeks, that's, that's very fine with me. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Hi there. We're up here.
Mr. Collins.
Right behind you.
Oh.
Hey, how are you?
Oh, okay. I thought somebody behind there. Got my directions fixed up.
It's the speaker system.
Okay.
And we certainly appreciate your concerns for bringing in business. I think every one of us up here also has the same concern. The other side of that equation is, there are local businesses in that same area as the residential. So, on balance, we're, we're also charged with, you know, making sure that those businesses that are in business are compatible with what's going to come in, if it comes in, so that it doesn't affect those current businesses. So it's a delicate balancing act, and we want to make sure that we do all the proper things, and looking at all the angles of this, to make sure that the businesses that are in business will not be adversely affected by something that comes in that they, they're not sure about. So that's, that's part of, part of our balancing act. So I appreciate your comments on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. This is a quasi-judicial item. I'd like to turn it again to the board. Are there any quasi-judicial disclosures that would like to be made at this point?
Mr. Chairman, are we done with the public hearing section?
I know, going to the public hearing, but I want to turn to this.
I've spoke to the applicant, to staff, and Mr. Melville.
Hi, two of us spoken to the same folks.
I'll echo that response, but have not spoken with anybody from the City of Fort Pierce.
I've also spoken with the applicant, and also the staff as well.
Okay. And I as well spoke with the applicant, as well as staff and Mr. Melville. This time, this is a general public comment. Anyone wishing to provide comments may do so at this time. Good evening, Mr. Melville.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Harold Melville, and I own one of the buildings in the Laurel Professional Park. As you can see, the Laurel Professional Park, can we go back to the zoning map? It's a little easier to say.
Sure. Maybe.
There you go. Is directly to the north of the subject property. And it's all of that residential medium zoned area, or comp plan is residential medium. And fundamentally, we're opposed to this land use change and rezoning, because this is simply not the right place for a used car lot. And that's, you know, to the credit of Mr. Collins, who's been very candid with you, and candid with staff. And he said, listen, the reason I want to have the commercials, uh, commercial land use and the CG or Commercial General zoning is because I have a lot of used cars and used boats that I've taken in at the pawn shop, and I want to put them on this property, this corner lot, and use it to sell them. So he wants to put a used car lot on the location. And I would respectfully suggest to you that this is not the right location for a used car lot. Fifteen years ago, when we designed and planned and built the Laurel Professional Park, we put a great deal of time, money, and effort into building a place and designing a place that was an attractive business professional park. We took advantage of the great foliage that existed. We worked the roads around the foliage. If you've been through the place, and it still looks great after 15 years, we've made every effort to make it an attractive business area, which would be a great job creator. And you have the photos possibly of the Laurel Park. Put up. And, you know, what we've done is worked, because if you look across the street from us, and you've got the Lake Forest Park, which is the assisted living facility, they did a beautiful job of that. It also has a good look to it, and between the two properties, and they're, they're great neighbors, what you've got in this area is a very positive node for quality commercial business type setting. Can we go to the Laurel Park pictures? And you can see, this is what we've tried to do in our area immediately to the north. We've all put a lot of money, can we go back? Yes, stay with those if you would. We've put a lot of money into these buildings. You know, we have over $700,000 per building in each of these properties, and we spent the time and money to try to maintain them. That kind of effort is simply not compatible with what you're going to get from the used car lot. Can we go over there? If you take a look at the photos of the pawn shop as it fronts on Edwards Road.
I don't know where they are.
Right there, that's good.
Okay.
What we've got here is, these are the photos of when Mr. Collins kind of jumped the gun a little bit, and he put a bunch of used cars on this subject property. And that's, that's what you're going to see. So you're going to have used cars. So you're going to have used cars lining up and down 25th Street and Edwards Road. And this is simply not compatible with residential medium, commercial office type areas. The Indian River State College, as we know, has purchased a very large tract of land to the immediate west of the subject property, right across 25th Street. And they apparently are going to be building some type of office park themselves. I would respectfully suggest to you that it would not be conducive to IRSC to have their office park, and that probably the entrance to their office park directly across from Mr. Collins' used car lot. And I think that could well inhibit their plans and what they would want to do with this. If you look at the land use maps, everything on the east side of 25th Street is residential medium. There's no commercial land use in that area. Go back to that zoning map. The properties all east of 25th Street are either county zoned or county comp residential medium, or they're in the city and they have a similar land use from the city. And what that allows, it allows commercial office, it allows neighborhood commercial on the corners, which is certainly appropriate. It allows professional office buildings. So what you've got is, that's the buffer to the residential areas, and you've got low-intensity commercial uses on 25th Street and Edwards Road. Right now, the subject property in the county has an RM land use, and it has a CN zoning. You can do a lot with that. If Mr. Collins wanted to do a gas station convenience store, that'd be fine. He's certainly entitled to do that with his existing land use and his existing zoning. And that would be compatible and consistent with what is there today. From a practical standpoint, this subject property will have to be annexed into the city. And why is that? Because even if this board changes the land use to commercial and the zoning to CG, as staff has said in the report, the city will not allow Mr. Collins to run the used car lot office out of the pawn shop, because that action is inconsistent with the city's zoning on the pawn shop. Therefore, Mr. Collins of necessity will have to build a freestanding building with public restrooms. All of those requirements have to go on the subject property. Once he does that, he has to get water and sewer, because it's commercially zoned. He's got to get it from FPUA. FPUA will require an annexation agreement. And so as night follows day, it's going to get annexed, even if Mr. Collins gets exactly what he wants. One of the problems you face then with the city is that they're going to get a pre-existing use on the property. While they might have the ability to change the land use, they cannot get rid of the pre-existing use when it goes in the city. So they're stuck with the used car lot. That is the last thing the City of Fort Pierce wants there. It is totally inconsistent with their plans and how they're trying to develop that neighborhood in a quality manner. The problem with a used car lot there is you kill the opportunity for a good, positive growth of businesses and offices in that area. Who's going to buy a piece of land and put a lot of money into an office building looking at the type of used car lot you're going to look at? Nobody's going to do that. So what you do is you effectively kill that whole area for growth and future potential. And as the city says in its memo, "A commercial land use and CG zoning is far too intense, and it is incompatible with the existing land uses and zonings and properties there." At the planning and zoning hearing, planning and zoning agreed that commercial zoning was too intense and uncontrolled for the surrounding neighborhood. That's in part of the language in your package from staff.
Mr. Melville, you'll need to wrap it up here.
They said CG had no protection and no buffering for surrounding neighbors. They recommended PNRD, Planned Non-Residential Development, that has some protections, but the applicant met with staff and said he didn't want to do PNRD. I would strongly recommend, respectfully urge, the Commission to deny both the land use and the rezoning applications. We've put a lot of time, effort, and money into trying to build something nice, and we'd hate to see it destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Somebody's -- Carol, this is your --
This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to address the board, please do so.
Good evening, Chairperson, Chair -- everybody of the board, good morning, good afternoon, evening.
Good evening.
Let me get my thoughts together, I'm sorry. I'm Janet Collins. I live on Chamberlain Boulevard in Fort Pierce, Florida. Couple things. I respect Mr. Melville. I know that Laurel Professional Buildings is a lovely place, but I kind of am interested in the fact that he seems to be representing the city. He seems to be representing the college saying that they're not going to put this there, that there, if there's a car dealership on that corner, and the city's not going to want to do it either. I guess my -- let me get to the point, is that up and down 25th Street, from Midway Road all the way up to where it merges with US-1, there are all sorts of buildings, all sorts of businesses, all sorts of lot sizes. We have churches, we have schools, we have a county building, we have stores, we have bars, restaurants, the full gamut. Our lot there on 25th and Edwards Road is just over one acre. We have probably over forty-some oak trees that we too want to preserve. We haven't come up with a site plan yet. We wanted to wait for the board to approve our zoning change before we do a site plan. We're going to be extremely limited to what we're going to be able to put on that lot. We understand that. I also wanted to bring it to your attention that our pawn shop is not owned by Carol and I anymore. We have sold the pawn shop. We own the land. This business that we're planning on putting on the corner of 25th and Edwards Road is a separate and completely separate building. It will be a separate building and also a separate business from the pawn shop. I misspoke at the zoning board when I said that we'd be selling cars from the pawn shop, and indeed, we probably will, from time to time, sell one or two of their cars. However, they have an acre there that they have plenty of room to sell their cars. So I just wanted to clear that up, that there wasn't maybe some confusion that it was going to be an extension. We fully intend to put a separate building on that corner lot, and I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board?
And I too -- excuse me, I'm sorry. I just wanted to also say that if we do need to postpone or table this until maybe after the holidays, if we wanted to get with the city and see what -- because we haven't gotten -- we haven't seen a copy of that email. And like Carol said, we met with at least five different planners back in the summer, and they didn't think they were going to have a problem with this zoning at all at that point in time. So we're real curious to see what changed their minds or what happened, so thank you.
Thank you. Return to the board. Comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask our staff, if these are two separate -- the underlying property is yours, correct, Collins family?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks. And if the business on the pawn property is licensed to that building in that particular process, the other property, which is being asked to be rezoned to commercial general, if they were to put a used car lot in it, wouldn't they have to have a building for an office, for restrooms, and parking, and handicap, and those types of things? Is that accurate to say?
Commissioner Zdowski, yes, that's correct. The parcel that you're looking at and considering for commercial general zoning would require a separate building for the vehicles, motor vehicle sales.
And that's under our rules, correct?
And that would be, yes. If, yes, if this stays in the city, if it stayed in the county and it is rezoned to commercial general, will come through our site planner building department. You know, I don't know, car lots don't necessarily have to have a large part of building, so it may just be a building permit.
And realizing, again, we want to try and stick with the land use side, realizing the next item will be the zoning.
Right. And that's why I'm thinking, you know, from this perspective, and I've heard from the Collinses, and I think that, you know, if this were to be a land use change and a zoning change, and I'm going to talk them together, because I think their end result is going to be the same. But I think I've heard from the Collinses saying that a couple of weeks isn't going to hurt them. I mean, they've been through this process so far. I think that seeing and hearing some of the conversation that we've had and some of the challenges, and knowing that with water and sewer going on that property, that an annexation will occur, I really would be feel more comfortable with having, especially with a new mayor in Fort Pierce, at least them having a chance to review this, have a conversation, even if it goes through our staff, and then come back to us and then have the final hearing. I'd just be more comfortable with that.
Comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'm kind of caught on this, because my concern is, from what I'm hearing from staff, this has been an application from way back, or earlier in --
Since July.
Since July. And I know in the minutes from the planning and zoning board meeting, it's mentioned on both of them that the city had no objection to it. And then looking at the dates of the email, it was almost a week later that there's an email that came from the city from July onward. If we agree to continue for a couple of weeks, I would like to make sure that it's on a date certain, that we get back to this board, so that we can make a decision with the understanding that it is still a county-owned or county property, it is still under the county rules, and all we're asking for is input from the city, not for them to make the decision for us.
Commissioner, I would agree with that. I think that, you know, simply because of the process, what's been happening at the city is that their director is in transition. So, you know, these things may have been slipped through the cracks. I don't know the answer to that. But because we are here at the eleventh hour, we've had a response from the planning and zoning board to look at a PNRD, which would be a substantial process to go through for the applicant. I'd just like to see that one last look at this, and then bring it back to us on a date certain, as you suggest, and finalize this.
Just as a thought again, realizing that the mayor is just one of five, as the same here, as the chair is one of five. I think the practice has always been to provide these to the staff rather than necessarily to the Commission.
Right.
As a result, I would assume that we're providing this to staff and looking generally for staff responses, and then leaving it into staff's hands if they want to communicate this to their Commission. But normally, we aren't waiting for Commission action for them to discuss these items at their public meetings. So I want to make --
Mr. Chair, I could not agree more hard -- and I thought that was coming through in my comments, as far as that we're still under the county's rules, and I don't have a problem with it going back and as we've continued to do and have done in the past and would hopefully continue, that those comments and concerns are usually coming in from the staff level.
And I disagree with that. But I would ask our staff, did FPUA weigh in in the discussion side of that thing in that an annexation would be forthcoming? I don't, I didn't hear that stated in this conversation.
I think because we were only considering land use and zoning, that there wasn't a, you know, detailed discussion. If it is the board's desire to have us contact the staff, it would be my suggestion that we would contact Mr. Carlin as the interim director and see if that is the, you know, and ask him for their input. From the staff point, I think that would be the appropriate step to take.
I just have listened to the meetings over there for a very, very long time, and, you know, this county commission gets beat up more times than it doesn't for moving forward and not considering, especially areas in which this property is contiguous to two sides of annexed property into the city. So as a good partner, and we went through this with the research and development park, we spent probably six months walking through some of the processes, because we were trying to be a good partner with the city, because the research park was going to ultimately sometime be annexed into the city, and they wanted their input. So I've heard that, you know, a couple of weeks isn't going to, you know, hurt the situation. I'd just like to have that final chance. Is there a date in January for an evening meeting that we can select?
Commissioners, that brings up a good point. If we were to -- typically, it's your first Tuesday in January that would be the night meeting. That actually is January the first, which is a holiday, so we don't -- currently, as we sit, we don't have a night meeting in January scheduled. The first regular meeting in January would be the, I believe, the third Tuesday, which is January the 15th. So if we're going to talk about a meeting in January, it would either be the January 15th meeting, which is a day meeting, or the board would have to set some other meeting as a night meeting, if that's what the board wants to do.
Mr. Chairman, since we've already dealt with the issue, I don't think we should have a problem with making it a day meeting, if that's the case. But I think we still have the question of whether we even want to postpone a decision on this, or whether you want to do it tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, along those lines, I think in this particular circumstance, since the City of Fort Pierce does not, as a normal rule, discuss these questions from us at public meetings, I think we do get discussion from staff level or comment from staff level. And I kind of took the comment from their staff just as part of the testimony that was part of what we were considering this evening. I don't know what else would be gained by going back to them, to be perfectly honest. They could once again give us their opinion. Yes, I like to work with them, and yes, this will be within the city at some point in time in all probability. I'm just not really sure to what point we would be delaying. And again, going back to them, it's been in the county since July. The applicant has testified that they have indeed spoken with the city personally. We've got their comment. I considered it as part of my, part of the testimony to be considered for the evening. I'm really not sure what would be expected to go back to the city again. Once again, remembering that we have for years requested that staff contact be part of the review process. I cannot recall, and perhaps my memory is faulty, but I cannot recall an instance where a question at this level of approval has gone before the board and the city. And I'm really not sure it's warranted at this point. Once again, if there's certainly a majority of the board that wants to delay, if the applicant wants to delay, I'm not totally opposed to it, but I'm really not sure what we would expect to gain by it. I don't think it's necessary.
Is there board action relative to a postponement they'd like to come forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to postpone this item until the first meeting in January, time certain.
That's January 15th at 9:00 AM or as soon thereafter. Is there a second for that motion? Hearing no second, that motion fails. Other discussion, other motions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take a stab at getting this off at the center here. We have the application before us. My discussion with the applicant indicated that what had been suggested to me, that this was, you know, the stuff from the cars, the vehicles, I'm sorry, from pawn shop that were going to be sold there, is not quite the case. It has been indicated to me, and we find a letter in our packet which indicates that there will be other autos brought in. According to the applicant's, their intent is not to act as an outlet for the pawn shop. I, you know, I've looked at the corner. They indicated that they intend to keep the foliage or the trees intact as far as possible. That's part of their desire for the property. Down the road, there may be other uses they've considered. Once again, we're not ready for site plan. They aren't either. What we have before us this evening seems to me to be, and our staff obviously agreed, that this seems to be a fairly logical progression from the residential to the, well, to the C2, city zoning, to the CG, which is what's being asked. And there is CG across the street. This is a busy corner. Yes, the office use is also can be considered, might be considered there, but I don't think the request is unwarranted, and I would be inclined to support staff recommendation this evening.
I have a motion to support staff recommendation.
Can I make a comment before we?
Let's see if we have a second, and then we'll --
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Based upon my talks with the Collinses and also the staff, looking at the information, if we're solely dealing with county property, the information that I got from staff and looking at the information that was in this general commercial. looking at the information that was in this general commercial, everything did line up concerning that, what we were expecting from that, also in the commercial as well. So, I know they've been through, from what I understand, a very strenuous process, and this has been going on since July. Am I correct? Correct. So, if we can, I would love to deal with it tonight, but if not, I can understand it being tabled, simply because we, one of the things that we have to consider as a board as well, and I'm with Commissioner Zadovsky on this one, is that we have to consider our working abilities also with the city, and our relationships with the city. But at the same time, I understand the Collins situation, they had ample time to respond, and if that is their response, then we really need to take it for full face value. So.
And that's where the motion to table was, didn't obtain a second, so that motion failed. So now we have a motion to approve staff recommendation. This would be adopting the Future Land Use Amendment, and that would be changing it from RM residential medium to CG commercial. The second item then would be to have the next public hearing relative to the rezoning request. You have concerns that have been represented by a neighbor relative to the fact that they believe that this is not consistent with the use of that area, regardless of how long an applicant may be sitting, going through the review process. And as everybody weighs that, you go through that process. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the item?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to again raise my concern that because of the situation, because it is county property, it is contiguous on two sides with the annexed property into the city of Fort Pierce, that the immediate use would create a problem for the city of Fort Pierce because in commercial general and as a car lot, as presented by the applicant, they would have to put a building on there with water and sewer, and an immediate annexation would occur and would create a situation for the city of Fort Pierce inconsistent with their comp plan and inconsistent with that area. I was hoping to have that conversation, let the city of Fort Pierce chime in, and possibly find a better solution and/or get their blessing. But I will not be supporting the motion as said.
And just for the record, I know that I met with the Collins, and I actually walked Ms. Collins through the fact that obviously if they decided to put a used car lot on that site, if it were in fact changed with the land use and the zoning, that it's not just about having a grass lot or even putting a gravel lot, that they would have to follow the county standards. And as a result, not only would they have a building, but they'd have retention areas, they'd have paved parking areas, they'd have lighting, they would have to follow through the entire process with sidewalk enhancements, the full gamut, and that's obviously an extensive and expensive process for them to go through. Wanted to make them fully aware of that and to talk with her about everything from the fees associated with that to how that process would proceed. So that way, people are aware of how that would actually develop, and realizing that if somebody had, you know, some land, even if we're currently zoned, they would still have to go through the same site plan approval process and to make those types of improvements on their property. Any other comments or discussions from the board?
Well, also, Mr. Chair, I want to say real quick that along with that, what you just stated, that building can also, based upon those pretenses, exhibit multiple uses and is not just limited to a quote-unquote "used car lot." So, that's something we have to consider.
Well, depending upon the use, when they bring a site plan forward, though, that has specific parking standards related with the particular use, as well as the staff follows through that process.
Okay.
So you have different uses that require different standards.
Gotcha.
Commissioner Lewis?
Ms. Chairman, I was just going to say, I found this to be relatively difficult. It has been pointed out that a convenience store perhaps would be acceptable on this corner to the, Mr. Melville. According to what the city said, that would not be acceptable to them. I feel that we are kind of in a bind here. We're looking at our codes and our standards, which have been, as I said at another hearing not too long ago, I know when something comes to me from staff, it has been looked at six ways from Sunday and cleared for everything that has to do with our standards for review, I'm finding it relatively difficult to be put in the position of looking at our staff and our desires for the development of this area, and being told that, you know, on the other hand, we're kind of being asked to make a decision based on the city standards. I find that to be a very awkward position to have us in, to find myself in anyway. Perhaps others don't have that conflict. But at this point in time, I am, you know, I kind of had to come to the conclusion that this is the county at this point in time, and so I'm handling it as if it's a county issue. And with all due respect to the city, we did have an opinion expressed from them, but it wasn't anything beyond that, as far as I could tell, as anyone else's opinion that might have been expressed.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to chime in on that one, in that I do believe that the corner store is acceptable under the city's code. But that aside, I think the biggest issue here is that this is largely an urbanized area, and we do have a situation in Fort Pierce that is unique to north of Midway Road, in that, you know, the city has, we have a patchwork of annexed properties and county. And if the city is going to properly build out going forward, I think we should be really looking hard at what we're accomplishing on their behalf with our comp plan and our rules, because largely, these properties will be annexed at some point in time. But if we give them a mishmash of different land uses that are not consistent with their comprehensive code, our comprehensive plan, it creates more problems for them going forward. As a 110-year-old city, the oldest city in St. Lucie County, I think we should be looking as best we can moving forward with county properties that are going to be in an urbanized area, and look at them somewhat differently, and take an extra thought to take that consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Johnson?
Here. Present. Yes. 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 Okay. Yes.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Maury?
Yes, ma'am. Motion carried. With that, let's turn to Item C, Planning and Development Services. Again, this is Carol Collins. This is the change in zoning. Ms. Wade, is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
No, sir. All the discussion was to be under the one item. I guess we just need to open the public hearing, close and open the public hearing.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board, please do so at this time. I believe all the comments have been made, seeing no one moving. We'll close the public comment, we'll return to the board. Again, this is a quasi-judicial item, and all comments or disclosures have been provided by the commission. Discussion from the board?
Move to deny staff recommendation.
We have a motion to deny staff recommendation, based upon?
Based upon all the other reasons that it's inconsistent with the current land use to the north. It is annexed by, it's a, it is contiguous to annexed property into the city of Fort Pierce. It'll also be annexed moving forward, even with this zoning change, because it will require an annexation agreement with the city of Fort Pierce for water and sewer. And again, it's inconsistent with the, I believe, based on the city's presentation, inconsistent with their comp plan.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Hearing no second. Motion fails. Is there other discussion or an alternate motion?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question of staff. I know in reading through this and in talking with Mr. and Mrs. Collins, and we've actually heard Mr. Melville bring up the PNRD idea. And staff, did you discuss after the PNZ meeting, with that recommendation came out of, with the applicant, if they would be willing to consider a PNRD, if the board was allowed to possibly look at scaling back the timeframe that they'd have to go through on the process, along with the cost difference of either crediting over and basically not charging the additional?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hutchinson, yes, we did discuss that with the applicant, that they were welcome to basically table their existing commercial general zoning application and bring it back to staff, and that we would take those application fees and, you know, if they wish to go through, you know, if it looked like the board was more inclined to support a PNRD site plan process, that then we could apply those application fees to the PNRD, that, you know, they may have to pay some difference to equal the PNRD application fee, and then start that process with the site plan.
As a quick aside, and for Commissioner Johnson's sake, can you discuss the planned non-residential development?
Exactly. The planned non-residential development is a zoning district that has a site plan attached to it. So procedurally, what the applicant would need to do is come back to staff, to the Development Review Committee, present their site plan that they're proposing. Staff would then, you know, take that through the staff review process and, you know, revise it as necessary with the applicant, make a recommendation, and then take that back to another public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission, who would then review both the zoning and the site plan together. And then based on their recommendation, we would bring that to the board. So, yes, it's a, you know, it's a lengthier process because, again, it's attached to the site plan. Does that answer all your questions?
I want to make sure it's clear from that standpoint.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know personally, as I've looked at it, I feel more comfortable in the PNRD process for that particular site, due to the sensitivities of that area. Looking at some of that, I feel like that's the right approach to be able to help make sure that the type of look and the nature of that area is better provided for. I also feel comfortable that staff have abilities, even within the existing zoning, to often look and examine things to make sure that certain considerations are provided for. So I'm a little pulled back and forth because I realize if we seek a PNRD, then we're sending them back through a fairly lengthy process, although I don't know that the applicant, from what I've heard, really has a solid idea of what they're wanting to do. I've heard several ideas. So it's not as though they have a pressing contract for a particular use at this point, so that maybe they had a lease with a gas station or something that was pushing them in that particular area. So I believe, though, from my perspective, I do like the PNRD, and I'll just provide it at that.
And Commissioner, I appreciate that because I've been back and forth on that very same issue. I would hate to send an applicant who's been advised by staff to go down One Avenue, and they've done that, to turn around and make the whole thing start back over again with the additional cost, the additional time. So I was not sure if this board had any comfort level of at least discussing, are there ways we can cut that back if that's the road we decide to go down, or if they so choose to consider that? That's why I was back and forth, is that one reason why they didn't consider the length of time, the process itself as a whole, having to go back before PNZ, along with the additional cost that's involved.
I would feel comfortable accepting the fees that we've already accepted on behalf of the applicant for their rezoning request, rather than seeking all additional.
I'm comfortable with that, relative to the fees, and they pay any overage of fees associated with the PNRD. Whatever the difference is in the application process, there's a difference in that process, correct? Okay. Instead of going through that same process again.
It's a substantial cost difference.
Okay. Okay.
Staff comments from Mr. Saddleier, Ms. Wood?
Mr. Chairman, relative to the concerns about the added cost of that process, yes, I believe that there's, and I don't remember the fees offhand, you know, I don't know if, you know, if Diana recalls, but, you know, it's likely, you know, it's likely a few hundred dollars difference in the application fee itself. You know, I would guess that really the cost difference is in the need to, you know, hire engineers and, you know, and/or planners to design the site plan, and then sometimes, you know, take that through the application process. Often, a plan development process is not something that an applicant does on their own. So it's really more the professional fees that are involved in going through that, that, you know, that become a little bit more substantial. And, you know, and I can't tell you what those are.
But realizing that if they are going to be bringing a site plan, they're actually going to be paying for those fees, the same fees at that time. So this is actually just tying the zoning to that. So instead of, you know, their next step in the process, should they receive site, rezoning approval, would be to go and actually pay for those fees to be, to the engineers, the surveyors, the planners, the landscape, and to actually get that site plan developed. So they'll be paying that same fee. This is tying those two together in that particular process.
And the other consideration, too, is that if, you know, if in fact, you know, Mr. Collins has, you know, has different ideas about what he may want to do with the property, having, you know, having him go through the PNRD process really requires, you know, a clearer idea. It's, you know, it's more difficult to amend that plan as, you know, as plans for the property changes, as opposed to, you know, if, for example, he got the commercial general zoning and then went through the building permit process to do whatever necessary paving and landscaping, you know, for a small building for the office, you know, to support that use. It's a little bit easier to amend that over time as, you know, as plans change. So it's just, you know, just some other procedural differences for that, that if you wanted to get the zoning approval, you know, for, with the PNRD process, it just becomes a little bit more, you know, kind of binding for him to make those decisions now.
That was at least by having a land use in place, they would have an idea, at least that they would know that they would, the parameters of where they could go with their rezoning, rather than having to go through the land use and the PNRD process. So at that point, they actually have a little more comfort. This may also be an opportunity for Commissioner Zadovsky then to be able to have the city of Fort Pierce better, be able to weigh in, because then they would have more specificity as it relates to the type of use that would be provided, as well as the neighbors, to be able to look at that, to know what perhaps is going to be proposed coming in.
And just procedurally, that because, procedurally, the applicant would, you know, if the applicant decided to, you know, that they would, they would be okay with going through the PNRD process, they would need to, you know, come to you at this hearing and request a withdrawal of their current zoning application, because, again, procedurally, if there's zoning application, I guess it's not going to get denied, that, you know, that motion failed, but if they get their zoning application denied, then they can't, you know, come back with the same application. So depending upon what the board is inclined to do, the applicant, just kind of reminding them that, you know, they may need to come up and request a withdrawal of the current zoning application if the board's not inclined to approve the commercial general zoning. So that comment is made for the benefit of everybody.
Discussions from the board?
I would be more comfortable with the PNRD so that, A, again, going back to my concerns about the properties being annexed on either side of this property, there could be a real knowledge of what is going to go in there. The fear is, once given commercial general, that benefit, those entitlements stay, and it'd be very difficult to pull back from that if we just give a blanket commercial general. The PNRD gives it some ability to have more eyes on it. Again, the concerns of the city, the possibility of annexation, the compatibility of whatever comes out of the PNRD to the properties to the north, I think is a consideration that needs to be taken into consideration, because, again, depending on what goes there, you could actually, while we could be supporting a business entity going in there, we could actually be hurting the businesses if it's not compatible. So this gives some certainty to the surrounding area, and I could support a PNRD.
For action is taken, are there, is there consensus from the board as it relates to whether we would feel more comfortable in doing a PNRD versus dealing with the existing zoning issue? That way, the applicant has the ability to ask for a waiver.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Or a withdrawal.
Historically, if I may be permitted, since I've been here for a while, this board, in all its various incarnations, has always been more comfortable with a PNRD, because there is a degree of certainty, you're dealing with a specific use down the road. The problem being that, as I understand what staff just said, they've asked and been answered. So for us to sit here and decide whether it'd be more comfortable for us to have that before us doesn't really accord with the fact that we have an applicant who didn't want to do that. While I appreciate your discussion, and yes, it would give us all, I guess, you know, some degree of, you know, moving forward on a more controlled path, which is kind of nice when you're, when you're dealing with an empty parcel. Once again, I'm not sure where we're going, when, as I understand it from staff, and judging from what Ms. Wood said, it was -- said, it was discussed at length, of that's not the case before us, we're, we're not being asked to decide whether it should be or whether it shouldn't be. The question's been asked, so we're dealing with what is.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lewis, I apologize if I was unclear. Yes, the applicant, based on, you know, our, our conversations and, you know, and quite honestly, you know, my, you know, advice on, on how, you know, how these public hearings can go and, you know, and various outcomes, yes, they've chosen to move forward with the commercial general application, but they still have the option at this public hearing, because this is still up to the board, you know, there's, there's, there's input from the city, there's input from your Planning and Zoning Commission, we had no idea, you know, what, you know, what this board would be concerned about or not concerned about relative to commercial general zoning. So the applicant at this moment has the option to change their mind essentially, given this discussion. So we're trying to, you know, I mean, not we, but I mean, you know, the staff has no issue with the commercial general zoning, we understand the concerns of the neighbors, we understand the concerns of the board, this, you know, this is the board's call, which way to go. So the applicant at this point has the option to, you know, make a request of this board, because that's, you know, they can convert their application. So again, procedurally, right now, you can, you know, you can take a vote to approve a commercial general zoning if you're not comfortable with that, and as a board as a whole, you're inclined to prefer the PNRD process, you know, you can ask the applicant, will you convert your application? And they can say, yes, we'd like to withdraw our application, and within a certain period of time, come back to staff to convert our CG application to a PNRD application. There should be probably procedurally a window of time by which they have to convert that application, so that they can apply their fees to the new PNRD application. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So we're trying to provide flexibility to the applicant.
Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean to get off on a tangent, but that was one of the questions I wanted covered, was the fact that not, I wanted it made clear whether or not the applicant had made the decision not to do the PNRD, and if they did not, was it based off of the fact that they would have to go back through the application fees, along with the timeframe? And that's their choice, and I'm, and, but I just wanted to make sure that they were not saying no to a PNRD based off of the fee charges, the additional fees, and the time requirements, and going back through all the public hearings, and all of that kind of stuff. That was my reason for bringing the question up, so that if that was the reason that they were saying no, that this board then had the ability to discuss, could we waive those types of things? It wasn't to ask them to change their mind or anything like that, and I knew of no other way to ask the question.
So several options that we have here at this point. We have the ability to deny the application, we have the ability to approve the application, we have the ability to have a withdrawal if the applicant so desires, and to have them go through a PNRD process. Do we have just a consensus from commissioners as it relates to PNRD, so that we can at least provide some guidance?
Well, Mr. Chairman, to add to your third component, we could agree to the PNRD and have had a parallel path, basically, what they've gone through is a portion of what they would go through with the PNRD. They're still going to do a site plan if it gets developed, correct? So there's going to be a process while engineers and builders and building permits and all that's still going to be part of the process.
Not for the site plan review, they wouldn't go into the building process.
Right, so, so, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Zadovsky, so, yes, procedurally, they would essentially be starting over with their zoning, they just, they just wouldn't be paying new fees, because they've paid a fee for a zoning application. But procedurally, yes, they'd be, and I don't know how much work they've done on a site plan, because I believe that they've been doing some coordination with our county engineer on questions about paving and things like that, but in that way, they would, they would be starting over. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I just think we could move forward with, you know, with their, again, it's up to us to determine the zoning process to get approval. I would support moving it forward with the PNRD. I think that you would give your neighbors some comfort, you would be more compatible with the existing land uses in the city of Fort Pierce, and I think you would probably get support from most of the boards in, in that regard. But that's certainly up to the applicant and this board.
Is there other consensus on the PNRD?
Can I approach, please?
Collins?
Yes. We've had a number of meetings with staff. Let me say that if you see fit to rezone this property to general commercial, or commercial general, we have to have a site plan, okay? We have to put together a site plan, we have to pay an engineer, we have to do landscaping, we have to bring everything up to the codes of St. Lucie County. I see no reason to go this, this other route, because we're going to do all this anyway. I, I see no reason to. So it's my feeling that we need to have a vote on the commercial general, rather than go into PD every what, as we've had talks with Ms. Karen and also Ms. Diane here. So we would like to ask the commission to vote tonight, and we'd like to ask you to vote for commercial general, and again, nothing was ever said, the fact that we're going to be selling the cars and boats from, from our pawnbroker business, or my son's pawnbroker business now, there's nothing ever said about that. And one of the things that I need a commercial general, because I need an automobile dealer's license in Tallahassee, and you cannot get it with a neighborhood commercial zoning, that's one of the reasons. We also want to offer this land, and I'm talking about two acres, a little over two acres on a busy corner here, to another business. I don't want to get locked in that I must have a auto dealership there, and I can't, I can't go sell it for something else. So that's why we're asking you to do the general commercial, we're going to provide the county, we're going to work with the engineers, we're going to have to pay an engineer ourselves, which will be interpreting engineers, we'll have to have a general contractor, which will be Precision, will be taking care of the general contracting part of it, and we will have to follow all the landscaping rules and regulations. So I do ask you just to, let's have a vote. Again, I don't know who from the city of Fort Pierce is objecting, after we met with them, five people in a room, and they had no objections to what we were doing.
And Mr. Collins, that's, I think that's why the comments that you're making are why people have hesitancy on the, the request, is because there's so much uncertainty up in the air, and now we've just learned about a new business on a two acre portion of that that wasn't previously discussed in meetings that we've had with, with you all, and so it's just those things that often cause people to have hesitancy, and that's as we've suggested, that things can come along, ownership can change, land uses always remain, zoning remains, regardless of the owner of the property. And so you can say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna build an ice cream stand, and then it could come in as something completely different, and that is.
We will, we will be within what is the general?
Right, which there are many uses.
Commercial general use.
There are allowed within that district.
That's what we want to do. We don't want to have government telling us how many hours we can be open, we don't want government to tell us this is the only thing you can do with this property now is auto sales. No, we want to be able to market our property, we want to be free to decide what we want to do with our property. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, based on the recent comments, the property to the, would be the east, would have to also be rezoned to commercial general, to emulate the property to the west on 25th Street. If, if you wanted to combine those properties as a two acre parcel, you just stated a moment ago.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Collins was combining the two parcels to come to the two acres. The one before you denied is 1.39 acre, I believe, and the other is in the city of Fort Pierce.
So then it would have to be rezoned through the city of Fort Pierce to achieve that.
That's correct.
I keep looking at my staff over here with a, a pained look, like I'm saying something that's not true.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Zadovsky, he, I.
If you look at the map, one, one parcel to the east is in the city of Fort Pierce.
Yes.
And that is zoned, commercial neighborhood, or what do they call it?
Oh, C1 or C2, it's, it's similar to our commercial neighborhood.
Okay. So the property that is being requested for commercial general today would have to be combined, or the new, the other property to be combined would have to be rezoned, am I not correct?
It, it depends upon what Mr. Collins wants to do. I mean, if, if he's needing to combine the properties for some reason, I mean, this is kind of a new question that hasn't.
Well, it just came up about five minutes ago.
Yeah, well, the staff has not had a lot of time to research this. So, so if that's, I mean, he can't combine city and county property, if he needs to combine the parcels, I mean, you know, my immediate answer would be that he needs to annex the corner parcel in the city and have the city staff advise him what to do. You know, that's not, we can't advise what, you know, what, what, what needs to occur in the city, on the city parcel, that's for the city's jurisdiction to consider, just like this parcel is for the county's jurisdiction to consider.
I'm just making a point that the chairman raised, it was very clear that we don't know what we're getting, we don't know what we're being offered. We know that for a period of time, it's possibly going to be a used car lot, but if it's going to be combined to create a two acre parcel to market to somebody else, there's another process that will, will occur. And I think that's what I'm hearing from the public, is that we don't know what we're going to agree to, and there's a process in which the next property would have to then be brought together. It's just creating a, a larger romance is what I see, but.
Yeah, and I, I completely understand, and I, and it, and that is the difficulty, that is a conundrum of straight zoning applications. In fact, the straight zoning application that you just approved a few minutes ago for a church, you, you still don't know what you're getting there. A church proposed the application, you don't know what's going to be developed there, and it was packaged within, you know, within an idea of a church. There are many uses that are allowed in institutional zoning, this is the same thing, and I agree, and I understand that it's very confusing and, and hard to know what you're going to get. Mr. Collins, I, I think just made it very easy for you, because he's just said he wants commercial general zoning, that's what he's asking for, that's what he'd like you to vote on, and he doesn't want the government telling him exactly what to do on the property, which is exactly what happens in the PNRD process. So I think, I think a lot just got clarified with those statements, that, that you're being asked to vote on a CG zoning.
Well, let's ask the question then, from a PNRD standpoint, with the city of Fort Pierce, would that process not be easier for him to go through if, if he was already in the PNRD process, if the annexation occurred? Would that, would that transition be easier for him going forward in the city of Fort Pierce? I don't know the answer to that.
A PNRD process?
Meaning that if, if going forward, he wanted to combine these properties to create and sell, market to somebody for some other use, or some other, you know, idea, wouldn't be, being in that process in the county make it easier for him to go into the annexation process in the city of Fort Pierce to handle that, because they would then have basically the rules that we put in place to help them transition that property together, to combine that property?
I.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hudson.
Commissioner Zadovsky, I have great respect for your concerns, especially when it comes to the city. But I can't, I'm, I have to agree with what Commissioner Lewis stated earlier tonight, I can't base it off of the cities and what they plan on doing if at some time it does get annexed in. Just because you signed that utility agreement doesn't mean you're going to get annexed in, there's not a timeframe that's attached to it. It could be years down the road. And I would just like, if I'm not mistaken, and Steph, I'm going to look to you to try to hit your memory, Commissioner Lewis, you might remember, that entire corner, 10 years ago, if that, five years ago, was all commercial, general commercial. There was actually a target that was, one point was planned on that southwest corner are proposed and pulled. Wait a minute, let me finish. I ought to know, I live right down the road. There, the one that a prior board, which I sat on, right behind that general, the gas station on the northwest corner, the, the board at that time actually approved storage units. So putting a CG there to me is basically bringing it back to what it used to be to begin with, years ago. I have no problem with moving forward on that, because now I'm hearing, as Karen, Ms. Wood just brought up, we have no guarantee, because what was now a storage unit, unit proposal, is now turned over to the college with the proposed parking garage.
Other comments from the board? I would like the board to proceed. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I have a motion to approve staff's recommendation to adopt resolution number 12-117 for a change in zoning from CN commercial to CG, based on staff recommendation. I have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Maury?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries. Let's move on to item D.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, Steph, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I'm hearing a little request to.
Yes, sir.
Take just a short breather.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
(pause) Let's move on to Item D. This is under the County Attorney's Office.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item D, as you indicated, is ordinance Number 12-13, which, if approved, would allow religious organizations in commercial zoning districts. Just as an overview of this, this is our second public hearing. We did start this process because of a concern that we were treating religious organizations differently than other membership organizations in our zoning code. I think unintentionally, but we were indeed treating them differently, and the law does not allow you to do that. You have to treat them consistently with other membership organizations. So, the overriding intent of this ordinance is to try to treat them consistently, the same as we do other membership organizations. I believe that's required by the law, and it's important, I think, that we make these changes. Permission to advertise was granted back in May. In July of this year, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero to forward the ordinance to the board with a recommendation for approval. As I've indicated, we did hold an initial public hearing in October, on October 2nd. We did indeed actually convene a second public hearing on October 23rd, but the board determined to continue the hearing to December 4th. There were questions at that time about a section in the ordinance, it was Section 7-10-29, which had some standards for membership organizations, and the board wanted to give staff the time to kind of work on those and actually see those in black and white before the board decided to vote or not vote on them. We did indeed make the changes that we thought the board wanted or made comments on at the October hearing. I have attached the new Section 7-10-29 with the black line versions in there. It shows that we deleted, as an example, in C1, we deleted proposed hours of operation because the board was concerned that that's not an appropriate question to ask. And we also deleted former Paragraph Four, which talked about discussion of the organization's operations, et cetera, because, again, the board felt that was not an appropriate question to ask. And then we also deleted Paragraph E, which, again, we felt that the board did not want to put that in the ordinance. We've revised the ordinance in accordance with what we thought was board direction at that time. We have a revised draft of Ordinance 12-13. We believe it's consistent with the law. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Any questions for staff? Hearing none. I believe this is a quasi-judicial item?
I don't believe so.
It wasn't noted?
Actually, it's a legislative item, Mr. Chairman, because it's a general ordinance. But sometimes ordinances...we had an ordinance changing the land use that was quasi-judicial, but this one would change the zoning code, so I don't think we have any disclosures.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. At this time, we'll open to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board, please do so at this time. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Brian Longworth. I am one that did raise some of the original concerns about this because churches were being, really, to put it, I don't know if there's any other way, kind of harassed by the county staff, even though they were friendly about their harassment. They still were very insistent that churches weren't allowed in commercial property. And, of course, you know, churches, I mean, we pointed out to the staff that our church had rented in commercial strip malls for about 16 years without having any county office question us. And so, I was thankful that...I am thankful that the county is taking this up. One of the things that was brought to our attention in the past was that we would, if we wanted to continue to meet in that location, that we would have to get a variance. I understand that this would probably take care of that issue, but also that we would have to build a second bathroom. We're just talking about 800 square feet. The most chairs you can fit in there is 40 chairs. I mean, I've been to family reunions with 150 people where you only have one bathroom. Might not be ideal, but, you know, again, our church had been renting an 800-square-foot bay and with one bathroom without problems for several years. We actually, because of the county's harassment, we actually had to move out of that spot, and the church that was next door to us actually had to rent a second bay. The only purpose of renting that second bay was so they could have a second bathroom. So, their rent has now doubled. Our plaza, the plaza where our computer store is, and also our church was, and this other church is, actually has five bays. Two of them are empty right now. And I know churches have contacted the landlord, and frankly, he's a little bit nervous to rent to the churches, even though he supports churches, because he knows what the county is going to require, or is concerned about what the county is going to require. So, again, I don't know whether those bathroom requirements are still here, but, again, this is something that I think if a church is to rent an 800-square-foot bay, is going to have to build an extra bathroom. I think the net effect is that you're going to have fewer churches that are able to operate, able to afford that in St. Louis County. And whether that's the desired result or not, that is going to be the result, is that you are going to have fewer churches. And I think if you look at churches, the good that churches do, churches do lessen the burden of government. Churches do provide a lot of good and services that really the government just couldn't replace. And you know what? This is one area where if a church had their own property, you wouldn't be collecting any property tax from that church. But when a church goes into a commercial...
Item D, this is under the County Attorney's Office.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item D, as you indicated, is ordinance number 12-13, which if approved would allow religious organizations and commercial zoning districts. Just as an overview of this, this is our second public hearing. We did start this process because of a concern that we were treating religious organizations differently than other membership organizations in our zoning code. I think unintentionally, but we were indeed treating them differently, and the law does not allow you to do that. You have to treat them consistently with other membership organizations. So, the overriding intent of this ordinance is to try to treat them consistently the same as we do other membership organizations. I believe that's required by the law, and it's important, I think, that we make these changes. Permission to advertise was granted back in May. In July of this year, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero to for the ordinance to the Board with a recommendation for approval. As I've indicated, we did hold an initial public hearing in October, on October 2nd. We did indeed actually convene a second public hearing on October 23rd, but the Board determined to continue the hearing to December 4th. There were questions at that time about a section, in the ordinance, it was Section 7-10-29, which had some standards for membership organizations, and the Board wanted to give staff the time to kind of work on those and actually see those in black and white before the Board decided to vote or not vote on them. We did indeed make the changes that we thought the Board wanted or made comments on at the October hearing. I have attached the new section 7-10-29 with the black line versions in there. It shows that we deleted, as an example, in C1, we deleted proposed hours of operation because the Board was concerned that that's not an appropriate question to ask. And we also deleted former Paragraph Four, which talked about discussion of the organization's operations, et cetera, because, again, the Board felt that was not an appropriate question to ask. And then we also deleted Paragraph E, which, again, we felt that the Board did not want to put that in the ordinance. We've revised the ordinance in accordance with what we thought was Board direction at that time. We have a revised draft of ordinance 12-13. We believe it's consistent with the law. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Any questions for staff? Hearing none. I believe this is a quasi-judicial item?
I don't believe so.
It wasn't noted?
Actually, it's a legislative item, Mr. Chairman, because it's a general ordinance. But sometimes ordinances, we had an ordinance changing the land use that was quasi-judicial, but this one would change the zoning code, so I don't think we have any disclosures.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. At this time, we'll open to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Board, please do so at this time. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Brian Longworth. I am one that did raise some of the original concerns about this, because churches were being, really, to put it, I don't know if there's any other way, kind of harassed by the county staff, even though they were friendly about their harassment, they still were very insistent that churches weren't allowed in commercial property. And, of course, you know, churches, I mean, we pointed out to the staff that our church had rented in commercial strip malls for about 16 years without having any county office question us, and so I was thankful that, or I am thankful that the county is taking this up. One of the things that was brought to our attention in the past was that we would, if we wanted to continue to meet in that location, that we would have to get a variance. I understand that this would probably take care of that issue, but also that we would have to build a second bathroom. We're just talking about 800 square feet. The most chairs you can fit in there is 40 chairs. I mean, I've been to family reunions with 150 people where you only have one bathroom. Might not be ideal, but, you know, again, our church had been renting an 800-square-foot bay and with one bathroom without problems for several years. We actually, because of the county's harassment, we actually had to move out of that spot, and the church that was next door to us actually had to rent a second bay. The only purpose of renting that second bay was so they could have a second bathroom. So, their rent has now doubled. Our plaza, the plaza where our computer store is, and also our church was, and this other church is, actually has five bays. Two of them are empty right now. And I know churches have contacted the landlord, and frankly, he's a little bit nervous to rent to the churches, even though he supports churches, because he knows what the county is going to require, or is concerned about what the county is going to require. So, again, I don't know whether those bathroom requirements are still here, but, again, this is something that I think if a church is to rent an 800-square-foot bay is going to have to build an extra bathroom, I think the net effect is that you're going to have fewer churches that are able to operate, able to afford that in St. Lucie County. And whether that's the desired result or not, that is going to be the result, is that you are going to have fewer churches. And I think if you look at churches, the good that churches do, churches do lessen the burden of government. Churches do provide a lot of good and services that really the government just couldn't replace. And, you know what? This is one area where if a church had their own property, you wouldn't be collecting any property tax from that church. But when a church goes into a commercial building and rents, part of their rent goes to pay the property taxes on that property. And so, I would definitely, again, encourage the allowance of churches to meet, but also, again, I would be against any type of extra requirement to have two bathrooms just in a single bay.
Thank you, Mr. Longworth.
Thank you.
Actually, to better help address that question, I know County Attorney can help on this particular area, but as it relates to this ordinance, this ordinance is actually just providing for the enclosed assembly areas. It's not actually dealing with the building code-
No, sir.
...which would be dealing with the bathroom issue.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. This is a zoning text change. It relates to permitted uses. Again, it's attempting to treat churches in a better way than we've treating them now to make them equal to membership organizations. As an example, they were allowed in commercial, I think, general as a temporary use for five years. That's gone. They're allowed now as a permitted use as other membership organizations. The issue of bathrooms, as you pointed out, is a code issue. It's not addressed in this ordinance. I don't know if Mr. Satterley has any comments on that, but this is a zoning text change, and it's, again, about trying to treat churches the same as membership organizations, which is better than they're being treated today.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. McIntyre is correct. The requirements for bathrooms is generated through the Florida Building Code, and we have a lot more flexibility within our own zoning than we have sometimes with the requirements of the building code, but we can certainly take a look at that and see if and where any flexibility exists within that. I know that, you know, in my own experience, having a restaurant, we ended up having to put in extra bathrooms because we expanded the assembly capacity, but it's basically the same kind of aspect. When you have a certain amount of people in a facility, there are requirements that kick in in terms of bathrooms, and so I know what the expense is to have to build extra bathrooms.
To better assist this discussion, can we talk about the hypothetical? I'm a church. I have an existing site. I'm now legally allowed per this to be able to remain as an existing use. At what point does the county have the ability through the building code to come in to enforce the regulations as it relates to the bathroom versus a new church that's coming in seeking a tenant space?
I don't know that we would, it would have to be, I think, some sort of code action against an existing use, and I don't know that we would have to, I think we're complaint-driven. I would have to be, I assume, Mr. Satterley's probably in a better position to answer that. Clearly, a new church coming in would be subject to all the current codes, an existing building. I don't think we do sweeps or anything like that in terms of going-
I know, that's what actually happened with this past summer on the code enforcement side, and that's where a lot of the churches were cited as a result of being inside the tenant bays. Correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, that's my recollection, that we were, it wasn't just churches, though. It was a number of different assemblies.
Institutional and assembly use?
Yeah, and the churches kind of got swept up into that whole effort.
Right.
But we're looking at that again, and as Mr. McIntyre said, you know, we are complaint-driven, and I'm not sure that some of that didn't, some of those actions that code enforcement take weren't generated from complaints.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like that was a complaint generation, that was just staff moving forward, and that's where I became concerned with that issue, that we were attacking and going in an area that perhaps had never been an issue.
Perhaps as a suggestion, if the Board decides to move forward with this ordinance, which, of course, staff recommends, perhaps you could direct staff to look at the building code issues, discuss with the fire department or any other applicable agency what kind of flexibility can be given, not only to churches but any membership organization. I think we want to treat everybody the same way and try to see if we can build some more flexibility into the process.
I like that. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to chime in, too, to say that, you know, the issues raised were building code issues as well as the Florida Fire Code and occupancy limits. So, it's just a different set of circumstances other than this ordinance.
Other comments from the Board? Is there a motion?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Motion second.
Do we have a comment to be able to add to comments that?
To direct staff to look into flexibility of building codes? Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Yes.
Have a motion and a second? Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. With that, staff, if you don't mind, I'd like to just rearrange briefly for a moment and see if we can move Community Services, item H, up. Ladies, would that help you? Would you appreciate that? You have to be brief.
I will be, I promise. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, Diana Westlawsky, Housing Manager. The item before you is a requirement of a Florida statute for a public hearing to review and approve a list of property owned by St. Lucie County which is suitable for affordable housing. I think the list is on the screen. The list includes properties which were purchased with grant money and also through our surplus lot process. And in addition, we'd like to inform you that it was brought to our attention, the reporting date had been missed, and so we're bringing this item to you to make the correction. We will be back again in 13 with another updated list.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the Board on this item, please come forward. Seeing no movement, we'll return to the Board.
Mr. Chairman, move approval, staff recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll return to item E, Planning and Development Services. This is ordinance number 12-024, future land use map amendment for seven county-owned parcels within the airport overlay zone.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners. Britt DeWitt, Senior Planner for the Record. I am presenting three items tonight, all of which are for county-owned parcels located throughout the county. And items 7E and 7F are both large-scale future land use map amendments, which, as opposed to a small-scale future land use map amendment, which is what we just previously saw with Mr. Collins's property. So, the difference is the size of the property. If it's under 10 acres, it's considered small scale. If it's over 10 acres, it's considered large scale, and which then requires two public hearings, whereas a small scale only requires one public hearing. So, this is the first public hearing, which is also referred to as the transmittal hearing because staff is requesting approval from the Board to transmit the petition to the State Department of Economic Opportunity, or DEO, for review and comment. The second public hearing will be for final adoption, where both of these two items do have concurrent rezoning petitions associated with them that will be brought at the time of adoption. And item number 7G is just a straight rezoning for a single county-owned parcel that is located on Selvits Road. These are three separate public hearings, but because they are county-initiated projects for county-owned land, they were advertised together in this half-page Tribune ad that was published on November 24th, and staff has received no public comment and opposition to any of the proposed amendments. A public notice sign was placed on each of the three project locations. And item 7E is the transmittal hearing for a large-scale future land use map amendment for seven county-owned parcels totaling 15 acres located within the airport overlay zone that are going from REU residential urban at five dwelling units to the acre to industrial. The property is shown here as being adjacent to the US-1 corridor just north of the St. Lucie Boulevard. And the purpose of this amendment is to bring this county-owned property that is managed by the St. Lucie County International Airport into compliance with the Airport Master Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, and FAA regulations, which all prohibit incompatible land uses such as residential homes, hospitals, and libraries. So, this is primarily a housekeeping item intended to bring the parcels into compliance with their existing uses and the county's adopted plans. And with that, staff is recommending that the proposed large-scale future land use map amendment be transmitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity for review and comment. And again, this item, along with its concurrent rezoning petition, will be brought back before you for adoption in about two months.
Thank you, Britt. Any comments or questions for staff? Hearing none? Movement? Okay. Hearing none, we'll open up public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Board on this item, please do so at this time. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public comment, return to the Board. Let's pleasure the Board.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item F, future land use map amendment for a 36-acre county-owned parcel within Lakewood Park Regional Park.
7F is another transmittal hearing for a large-scale future land use map amendment for the Lakewood Park Regional Park located off of Emerson Road just north of Andrea Road. The amendments are for the 36-acre active recreational portion of the park, which currently has a community pool and a sporting complex. And this slide shows the proposed Lakewood Park future land use map amendment going from residential urban to public facilities, and no operational changes are proposed, so the purpose of this item is to bring the future land use of the property into consistency with its existing active recreational use. So, again, this item can be considered a housekeeping item. And staff is recommending that the future land use map amendment be transmitted to the State Department of Economic Opportunity for review and comment. And, again, this item, along with its concurrent rezoning petition, will be brought back before you for adoption in two months.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the Board, please do so at this time. Seeing no movement, we'll return to the Board. Action from the Board.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item G, Planning and Development Services, is Resolution 12-194. By the way, just as an aside, the item eight, Public Works Port Master Plan update, that was pulled prior to the meeting, in case anyone is sitting here waiting for that. I want to make sure nobody is waiting for that item. That was pulled prior to the meeting, Port Master Plan. Great, I'd hate to see that somebody had been waiting for that item. Item G, this is rezoning for a 28-acre county-owned parcel at the southwest intersection of Selvits Road and Energy Lane. This is a quasi-judicial item. Turn to staff.
Item 7G is a rezoning for the 28-acre parcel, like you mentioned. This is county-owned land located at Selvits and Divine Road, about a half-mile north of Midway Road. The rezone is from agricultural residential at one unit to the acre to institutional to allow for the future development of a transit facility as identified in the St. Lucie County Transportation Planning Organization's Regional Long Range Transportation Plan and the county's five-year transit development plan. This change in zoning also furthers Comprehensive Plan goal or objective 262, which calls for the protection of future mass transit. Here is a map of the site and its surrounding zoning, which has industrial light on two sides and residential on the other two sides. So, in accordance with the adopted TPO long-range plan and the county's transit plan, staff is recommending adoption of the rezoning of the 28-acre parcel on Selvits Road from agricultural residential to institutional. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Quasi-judicial item, any disclosures?
No, there's no one on the issue.
None, sir?
None.
No disclosures at all? With that, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the Board on this item, please do so at this time. Seeing no movement, we'll return to the Board. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item H, Community Services, this is a proposed, we did that one? Great, we're moving on to I, Planning and Development Services. This is the Reserve Development of Regional Impact. This is a development order amendment. With that, we'll turn to staff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, again, Kara Wood, Planning Manager. This is the Tenth Amendment to the Reserve Development of Regional Impact Development Order. This is the location of the subject property at the intersection of I-95 and Glades Cut Off Road. As you can see from the aerial, the property is mostly developed and is surrounded by the city of Port St. Lucie. We've provided all the public notice requirements, including a sign on the property and ad in the St. Lucie News Tribune, and a mail notice was provided to all 2,500 reserve residents. We'll provide a very brief history of this development of regional impact. It was originally approved in 1989 with these basic development thresholds, a mix of residential, industrial, commercial, office, and hotel. As with all DRIs, this development came with a variety of mitigation requirements for the proposed impacts, the most substantial of which is the future six-laning of the St. Lucie West Boulevard Bridge over I-95. Since 1989, there have been nine amendments to the development order to address various changing conditions, you know, in and around the development, and this is now the Tenth Amendment. One of the most notable amendments was in 2004, which is one of the amendments that reduced some of the development thresholds. There was a net reduction of about 1,000 residential units, about 1 million square feet of industrial, and about 100,000 square feet of retail. Also with this reduction in thresholds, there was an added condition to allow for the conversion of uses based on the traffic equivalent of those uses, so then the developer could, you know, could sort of switch out some uses without amending the entire development order based on the traffic impact that those uses would propose. There was also, in that condition, requiring the developer to provide a six-lane bridge facility over I-95, a specific trip trigger which would initiate their requirement to build that six-lane facility. So, that's been in the development order since 2004. So, the current amendment changes include overall net reductions. There's a reduction of 300 dwelling units of residential, 140,000 square feet of commercial, a little over 100,000 square feet of office, and the addition of 60 hotel rooms. So, overall, there is a net reduction of impacts being proposed in the development. In addition, there are some other changes that are being requested by the applicant. There's basically a statutory four-year extension to extend the expiration date to 2020. There is a new transportation condition for the developer obligations on that St. Lucie Boulevard, St. Lucie West Boulevard facility. There is the requirement to revise what is an existing impact-free credit agreement related to the transportation improvements that the county and the developer just need to, you know, to clean up what credits have been provided to date. And there is a recognition of a parcel of land to be donated to the city of Port St. Lucie for upland habitat mitigation, and this is a map that identifies that subject parcel to be donated to the city of Port St. Lucie. So, I'm going to back up and take a few minutes to walk the Board and the public through all the time that staff has spent in reviewing this application, because it has a bit of history. The application was originally submitted in October of last year as an NOPC. It's one of those, you know, sort of planning terminology. It stands for Notice of Proposed Change, and it's attached to a specific sort of state outline process that also involves the review of the Regional Planning Council, as well as the State Land Planning Agency, which is now the Department of Economic Opportunity. That application was submitted in conjunction with a future land use map amendment from commercial to residential and a planned unit development, because at that time, the developers' plans were to convert an existing commercial site in the development to a residential site and build a multifamily housing complex there. So, that was submitted in October. In January of this year, the developer met with reserve residents to review their proposal and get feedback from the residents on this conversion of land use and the construction of a multifamily development. There was significant objection from the residents, and partly based on that, the applicant chose to withdraw the map amendment and the PUD, and then go back and convert their existing- chose to withdraw the map amendment and the PUD and then go back and convert their existing DRI amendment. So in March of this year, the applicant submitted the revised amendment to be consistent with what you're reviewing this evening. When that amendment was submitted, staff realized that those reductions in thresholds would then begin to make implications to when or if the developer would ever have to make that six-lane bridge improvement over I-95. So this, you know, so this triggered some great concerns for staff. We knew that, you know, of the residents' awareness of this condition and the importance of developers to support the improvement of that facility. So we started on a, you know, kind of a quest to really understand, well, how can we, as a county, in a development order that's simply reducing proposed impacts, require the developer to, you know, to go in and really reanalyze what's involved with those thresholds and with that requirement to build the six-lane facility? Staff spent a lot of time coordinating with a variety of agencies, again, the State Land Planning Agency and the Regional Planning Council, which are the agencies which typically support the DRI review process. You know, they have the staff with the qualifications, you know, to really review what are the traffic impacts that, you know, that a developer is proposing. Because the county is really just considering a reduction of impacts and because of recent state legislative changes that change the way DRIs are reviewed, we were really, we were really very limited in what we could ask the developer to both analyze and improve as part of their transportation impacts. So there's some of that correspondence that went between staff of the county and the city of Port St. Lucie, as well as with the Florida Department of Transportation, with the Regional Planning Council, kind of showing some of the history of those questions that were being asked, is how can the county maintain some assurance that that facility will be improved in the future? So in July of 2012, both the DEO and the RPC determined that this amendment was not subject to state review because of the new statutory changes, and that this is essentially entirely left up to a local process. To basically kind of complicate matters further, the reduction in impacts in the reserve was being proposed concurrent with an increase in impacts in the Verano Development of Regional Impact, which is only in the city of Port St. Lucie. So even though, even though there were increased impacts being proposed, all of those reviews are entirely under the jurisdiction of the city of Port St. Lucie. The county had nothing in what was, in what the county is considering, which is, again, simply a reduction of impacts in the reserve. So county staff was left with the thought that really the best way to approach this is just to work as cooperatively as possible with all the parties involved. And we organized a meeting with the Reserve Property Owners Association representatives, with county staff, city staff, the Regional Planning Council, and DOT, to really sit down at the table and begin to, and begin to work through what are the fundamental concerns and what's the most reasonable way to address them, given the county's limitations in this particular application. The result of all this consideration is essentially a replication of a new condition for transportation improvements that actually appears in the Verano DRI Development Order. So a new condition 62 recognizes that, condition 62 in the reserve development order replicates a condition in the Verano Development Order that requires some improvements to the transportation facilities in this area. So specifically, those improvements are a dual-left turn lane from St. Lucie West Boulevard to Peacock Boulevard, some signal coordination, the construction of another westbound lane on St. Lucie Boulevard over I-95, and the conversion of a Peacock Boulevard southbound lane to a through-and-right turn lane. I know that the applicant has some more detailed information on how those improvements collectively will significantly improve traffic flow throughout the area. And staff and the Reserve Property Owners Association and the applicant really believe that this is, this is the best solution that we've been able to come up with, and we've really appreciated the developer's cooperation in replicating this requirement in the reserve development order, even though it's not specifically tied to the reduction in impacts that the developer is proposing in the reserve tonight. So that essentially concludes my presentation. Staff does recommend board adoption of Resolution 12004 approving the 10th Amendment to the DRI. There's one minor correction in the draft resolution that's before you, which is in condition 15A, which has to do with the donation of this parcel of land to the city of Port St. Lucie. We simply need to omit the reference to Verano at the end of that page. And with that, staff is here to answer any questions that you may have. I have Diana Waite, who is actually the project planner on this, who has all the details of the application organized very well. Mark Satterly was also very involved in the discussion, so we'll tag team to answer any questions if there are. And the applicant has a brief presentation, as well as the Reserve Property Owners Association representatives.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Before we move any further, I will be declaring a conflict of interest, since I've done work for Colter on the Verano project. I should be passing the gavel to Commissioner Hudson, and she'll be able to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, are there any questions from the board to the staff? Seeing none, and Ms. Wood, you mentioned that there's going to be a presentation or something from the applicant?
Yes, I believe the applicant is here to make a statement, and again, as well as the property owners' representatives.
Thank you. Well, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing then.
Hello, John Sapo. I'm the Senior Vice President with Colter. I'd like to thank your staff for the presentation that they've done and the tremendous amount of work that's gone into processing this application. It's, on its face, a relatively simple application in that it merely reduces entitlements within the reserve. And as Ms. Wood pointed out, on two other separate occasions, there have been amendments that have reduced entitlements in the reserve, one by 100,000 square feet of retail and another one by 900 residential units and about 1 million square feet of industrial. That being said, the complication came from the fact that it became apparent that as we build out the reserve and there's very little land left to build on in the reserve, the trip trigger that triggers the massive six-laning over the I-95 Bridge will never be met. So both the county and the city asked us, what can we do to alleviate what still continues to be some traffic issues going across the bridge and specifically at the Peacock and St. Lucie West intersection? So what we've worked out and what is in condition 62 of the reserve DRI proposed amendment, as well as condition 32 of Verano, is that we would build dual-left turn lanes at the, going eastbound on St. Lucie West Boulevard at the Peacock intersection, two-left turn lanes going back the full 450 feet of the city right-of-way, and then, subject to a permit from DOT, going back another 450 feet, or as much as they would allow us to do, into the FDOT right-of-way. So we'd have what is now 200 feet of single-left turn lane being improved into two 900-foot left-turn lanes with substantially more stacking provided. We agreed in the Verano Development Order to let the contract for that within 18 months of that development order, but I haven't comment to make on that in a moment. We also agreed to put a third westbound lane across I-95 within five years of that development order being approved. As a third item, coincident with the dual-left turn lanes, we agreed to install the fiber-optic cable and equipment that would allow coordination of the three traffic lights, the one at the off-ramp on the west side of I-95 at St. Lucie West Boulevard, the one on the east side of I-95 at St. Lucie West Boulevard, and the one at Peacock. So where, as of six months ago, the county controlled the light on the west side, the city controlled the two lights on the east side, and all three were not coordinated. Now, I believe the counties agreed with the city to let the city control the light on the west side of I-95. And in addition to that, this fiber-optic cable will allow those lights to now be coordinated. And we believe that'll help with the traffic flow also. So.
Madam Chair. If I could ask, you put a graphic up here, I just want to make sure that I'm seeing this right. It could be just a graphic issue, and it appears, though, by the way this graphic looks, you have the two lanes coming down, then by the time you get to Peacock, it looks almost like it's reducing down to one lane. Is that just a graphical?
That's a graphic thing.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah. I'm told that the top of the drawing at Peacock is the existing condition.
Right.
And the bottom is, shows the dual lefts.
Okay.
Anyhow, it's a graphic thing.
Okay, that's fine.
So we've agreed to do those things, and again, as I said, it's, on the face of the application, it's a simple reduction in entitlements, which has been done on two occasions before. But because there is a traffic condition that needs some help, we agreed with the city and with the county and with the reserve POA to make these additional improvements and put a time certain on them so that they get done. Now, addressing the time certain, subsequent to our meeting at the city council, where the city council approved both the Verano DRI amendment and the reserve DRI amendment, because the reserve is a multi-jurisdictional DRI, we've had continued meetings with the county staff and with the reserve POA board and its attorney. And we agreed to commit tonight on the record that once this amendment is approved, that we will immediately apply with both the city and DOT to start the process for the dual lefts at Peacock and pursue those as quickly as possible. And once the permits are issued by both agencies, within 60 days, immediately begin construction. Our target would be to have those dual lefts in before spring training of 2014, so about February of 2014. Now, that's subject to city and DOT permitting. The city is fully on board, and we think with the help of the county staff, the city staff, and the reserve POA and their attorney, Marcy Nolan, that we can get DOT on board with the permitting process. So we would make that commitment to the board tonight to accelerate that process even more than is required in the amendment. I don't want to take up too much time, it's been a long night for everybody. We do have a presentation, and we have traffic models that could show how these, there are simulations of how the traffic improvements work with traffic flows based on ITE traffic formulas. If the board wants to see those, we can put them on, but I think the basic concept is that these dual lefts, I think everybody's gone through that intersection and sees how it backs up, and when the one-left turn lane stops, it backs out even into the through lane, and that's what causes a real problem. So we believe these two will greatly improve flow at that intersection, as well as the coordination of the traffic lights.
Madam Chair, are you going to show the third lane, west to east, so that the public that's here to?
Before you start that, though, I do have a question in regards to the fiber optics being laid for the signalization. Do we know when that would be done? Because I think that would show an immediate improvement even sooner, once those are signaledized.
Can it be done sooner? I mean, there again, we could commit to immediately, as part of the permitting process, start the permitting process for that. We would do that anyhow, but if that, if those permits come out earlier, again, I would commit to do that installation as soon as the permits are available.
Okay.
So we could do that. I think that alone will help.
Well, that's why I was asking the question. I didn't know if it was being put as part of the extension, you know, of the turn lanes or, because I know that's getting into the engineering part of it, and I'm not going to sit up here and confess that I'm the best one that understands that part.
For the record, Scott Morton with the applicant. Commissioner Hudson, I think now that the city has taken over, I think they are already manually resynchronizing the lights and the timing and observing them to try and set them best they can manually to work with the peak hour traffics that they, you know, that they see out there occurring today. The fiber optics will allow them to monitor that from their engineering center, you know, and make adjustments and possibly, you know, make the adjustments on a, you know, to change them when spring training occurs and put them back to something else just for normal peak season traffic.
Okay.
All right, so we have an illustration of that third, what will be ultimately a westbound turn lane. And what that will provide is, as traffic moves west across the bridge, the traffic that wants to get onto the I-95 to go southbound will have a right turn lane, and there'll be a dedicated through lane, as opposed to what you have now, which is just the one lane. So again, I'd like to thank the staff, the city staff, and the POA board. Everybody's worked together to come up with some solutions that we think will help a lot. In summary, I'd just like to say that we agree, of course, with the staff recommendation and would respectfully ask that the board approve the DRI amendment. I believe, I've told you that the POA board has agreed to support our amendment based on these commitments. They've told us that, and I believe they're here to tell you that tonight also. So with that, if there's any questions, we can answer them, or I'd like to reserve some time at the end of the presentation or the public hearing to address anything that comes up in the hearing.
Okay, and I just want to ask one more question, and that's more just clarification on the record, and I didn't hear you say it, although I've read it in the development orders, that there's a five-year trigger for the bridge, but there's also a commitment from the Colter group that if, for some reason, there's a way to work with DOT to advance funding, which is something I know we are looking at trying to get done through the TPO, that you would then advance your portion of the funding to match and get moving.
Yes, in fact, that's something, and I think Commissioner Lewis was at the city hearing, but that was something that got worked out at the St. Lucie, Port St. Lucie City Commission meeting. Marcy Nolan from the POA came up with that concept, and Colter agreed that if any state agency, including DOT, was able to bring funds to the table to create additional improvements at that intersection, then rather than wait the five years, we would advance all our funds and bring our funds and put them to work at that point in time.
All right.
So that's the idea behind that.
And Madam Chair, along the lines of your thinking, I believe that the calculations came out to about 3.9 million. Don't quote me at 3.6, 3.9.
It's, yes, in that neighborhood.
And my question is, because, you know, this area of Port St. Lucie has had some development and to the south, where developers have made commitments for millions of dollars in infrastructure and so on and so forth. in infrastructure and so on and so forth, and they haven't been able to follow through, and while those agreements were made, they weren't able to achieve the dollars to handle some of the infrastructure changes. My question is, would you be willing to agree to a performance bond or irrevocable letter of credit to give the residents of the Reserve and the area of St. Luci, Port St. Lucie, you know, some, I guess, you know...
Sure.
Assurance, thank you, for that this is going to get done, because I think if we have that document in hand, that it gives us the ability, through the TPO, to work through with Port St. Lucie to push FDOT to come to the table with the possibility of some CIS funds, because, you know, bird in the hand usually gets a lot more attention than just a commitment.
Well, there is certainly a bird in the hand, in that that money is committed as a specific condition of the Verano Development Order, and it's a condition that runs with the land. So in the event that Coulter went away, and we've weathered some pretty bad economic times, and we're still standing, so... But that being said, I think just having that condition in the Verano, because if we don't meet that commission, that condition, then all the development at Verano stops. On the other hand, as soon as permits are issued, I believe we're going to be required to put up, post some sort of surety. So at the point in time that the permits get issued, we will be posting surety for those improvements, so that once it's permitted and work starts, you're assured that the project's going to be completed.
Well, I'm just trying to look for assurances myself, just that, you know, we're having a TPO meeting tomorrow, and if we can agree tonight, you know, we can raise that conversation as soon as tomorrow, and the possibility, FDOT is already on 95. If they were so inclined to work with us, we might have an opportunity to push that forward even faster. But without some document or some agreement that says that a performance bond or irrevocable letter of credit, or the cash, of course, we know that that's a lot harder to do. But I think having that in hand would give us the opportunity to push FDOT and the governor to help us sooner.
Well, as I say, the condition itself is a pretty strong club, and on top of it, whether or not the agencies would require it, we could commit that once those permits were in hand, we would post surety to assure the completion of those improvements. So we could certainly do that.
Well, I was trying to tie this to Verano, I guess it's probably, because developments have been approved and not been built. And if you don't go to the building process, the building permit process, with that condition, you're still not required to put it up until you're ready to build that.
Right, but I mean, part of the process emanates from the fact that as you build that development, that's what creates, you know, the impact that you're trying to mitigate. So if it doesn't get built, there's no impact to mitigate. That being said, what we've done by committing the funds to a time certain is saying whether or not those impacts are created, the impact timing for this was originally about 1,100 units sold in Verano and CO'd. We're at about 140 now, and we're selling, I think this year we'll close about 50 units. So the timeframe on that could have gone, God knows how long. That's why we agreed with various agencies and the Reserve POA to put dates certain on those improvements. And again, as I said, once the permits are issued, the surety will be posted, so you're sure that the improvements get built.
Thanks, Scott. Do you want something?
Yeah. Commissioner, one other thing, I'd like to say that if the funds of TPO were able to come together with DOT and come up with some funding mechanisms, something, I think the DOT would probably, before they would do a final commitment to that, want to enter into some form of formal agreement, multi-party. At that time, I think we can put, you know, what you're discussing on to the table, once we know there are some assurances for that funding, coming, you know, from, you know, other sources as well.
And that's just part of my process here, is that, because we never know if the state's going to say, all of a sudden, we have a bundle of money, we want to spend it, do we have any agreements, do we have any assurances, do we have, you know, documentation that says these monies are available? And that's what I'm trying to get clarification on, so that if somehow, some way, the state says, oh, we have some money, and we can match it, that's when I make sure that we have as many options as possible on the table.
Again, I think with the condition in the development order is pretty clear, that if there's matching funds available, we'll accelerate the payments of our monies, so... And we will do that. You know, we've been a developer in St. Lucie County since 1998, and we've had a number of issues before, both the county commission and the city, and I think the two people that have been on since we started will tell you that I think Coulter has honored all its obligations made up here, so with that...
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from the board at this point? Did you have anything else that you wanted to add in on your presentation here?
I think in the interest of time, we'll leave it at this, and just ask that we be allowed to get up at the end and summarize and address any questions that might come up during the hearing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to address the board? Please feel free to come on up to the mic, if you can state your name for the record.
Charlene Furman. I have two questions. One is, I'm assuming that you, some of you at least have been at that area of 95, the northbound exit. If they're not putting another eastbound lane in, I think you have to consider the impact of the exit of 95 North onto St. Lucie West. You have people there trying to get across from the northbound exit onto Peacock. Now, even though you have, the proposal is to build two left turn lanes, you have the people from 95 attempting to get across to either one of those two left-hand lanes, which will be constructed. But at the same token, you have one lane coming from the reserve area. We get all backed up there, because you've got that one lane, you've got 95 exit coming off, blocking it, and we can't move. It takes us sometimes 45 minutes to get through, because you've got that exit 95 North blocking the entire edge. Something has to be done, maybe what they call the cup handle turn, that people coming off of 95 have to stay to the right, and then do a cup handle turn if they choose to make a left onto Peacock. And I think that has to be considered, because this sounds good, but I think in reality, that 95 crossover to Peacock is going to create a problem. The other question, the statement that I'd like to make, just in answer to what you said, that Coulter has lived up to things they've promised. Unfortunately, I have, my feeling is they haven't. For example, when we were building the proposal that I was given to the clubhouse in the Island Club, and what Coulter ended up giving us was not what Coulter promised, firstly. Secondly, I believe I could be wrong, but I thought also, in that parcel that we're talking about of land, there was supposed to be a fire department house built there, and we never had one put there. The fire department house, I believe, is over at Verano. We were over at Tradition Area, the landing area. We, I believe, were supposed to have a fire department house on our side of the bridge, and it's not there. And when we have, that bridge gets backed up, we have a problem with emergency vehicles. And I have one other question, is you're having two lanes westbound. Is the two lanes westbound plus that turn lane onto southbound 95? You're having, you're making two westbound lanes, and I believe you stated that there would be a, one lane that would be dedicated to make the turn to go onto the southbound 95. Is that the second lane that's being built, or is that going to be two lanes going right through into the reserve area, and that's an additional turn onto 95 southbound?
If we can, if, no, I want you, you had asked for the end after all the public comments, so it's not that we're ignoring your questions, but I'm asking them to let the residents have their opportunity before they answer those. It doesn't matter, whoever wants to come to the mic, please.
Janet Deering from PGA Village. I'm just a little confused here, because I have not been kept up too much to this, which I thought I was. At the circle, we're going to have a problem, is if they're putting new, the 400 extra that they're taking off our DRI, put it onto the other one, to the Verano, there's going to be 400 units that are still going to be using that circle and going over that bridge, which is going to add to what we have already, have all the confusion, going out there, going through the circle, going over the bridge on one lane, coming into, the cars coming off of the 95, crossing Peacock, there's, it's like a stock car crash up down there sometimes when you get there. It is very difficult, and I think that we do need the two lanes for the left turn. I thought, when I listened to the city thing on TV, I wasn't able to get there, that they were putting two lanes coming off, if I'm incorrect, please correct me, two lanes coming off to merge in, and then, as Charlene said, trying to get over to the left lane, that is going to be a zoo, a mess. It's not, maybe the, it'll never be met as far as the times when they do the checking, the amount of cars that are going through our village and going out there, but that thing, at peak times, we are a mess. We have to go out either the other way, and we were not given another exit to get out that way. We have one way that goes down to Glades Road, and the commercial people, with all the development that's going out on Glades Road eventually, the commercial, going down Commercial Road, going out that way also, it's going to be a mess. And I just really don't think that this is going to work out so well. And also, with the promises that are made, Coulter has changed 10 times. Why? Because they're trying to change everything that they promised first, then again, they change it again, and here we are with something new all the time, and you'll notice that there's not as many people coming out to fight for this this time, because they're tired of it. It's happening all the time, they're changing all the time. And in five years, are we still going to get what they're promising? I don't think so, if we let them go on that long. I really don't. I'm disappointed, I'm disappointed in a lot of things tonight, disappointed we don't have a showing, I haven't heard any from, for the board come up and talk, and that disappoints me also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Mrs. Deering, Mrs. Deering?
Yeah.
Hi, did you happen to hear that they were going to reduce the commercial by, what was it, a million square feet? I'll let them, I'll let them...
The commercial on Commercial Road, yes.
So, I just...
But some of that other stuff is going on to the Verano thing. I listened to Jack Kelly say that he thought that this was not a good idea. He was the only one on the city, but I thought his arguments were absolutely right on, and they didn't listen, because it was something that was going to happen now, not something that was going to happen later, I think.
I'm going to ask them to readdress the reductions in their impacts, so that you're comfortable, or at least you know what the, those impacts are, whenever they come back up.
Well, I get the impacts when I drive there. I get the impacts when the ballgames are there. I see what happens, and I see what happens when people are coming home, I see the speeders, I see other things going around the circle, people almost being killed, because they're coming out from Commercial this way, that way, and when you have 400 people renting in Vestana, which is right there at our circle and goes through another hotel, it's going to be a problem. There's going to be more problems, which will come back and start talking about it again, and maybe if we do have an extension of the five years, we'll be able to argue with it, but people are getting tired of it, and a lot of people are moving out, or changing their location in the place, so they can get to the front, and get to the front first. We have people that have done that. And it's a shame, it really is a shame, because it's a beautiful place, and a lot of the promises that were made in the beginning were not kept. So I can't believe that this one's going to work out that well. I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Disan?
Yeah.
It's a pleasure to be before you all today. My name is Marcy Nolan. I'm an attorney here, representing the PGA Village Property Owners Association. I do have a prepared statement that I'd like to enter into the record, but based upon the conversations and the presentation by staff, I'm going to be very brief, and just kind of outline the position of the PGA Board this evening. First and foremost, as you all know, PGA Village Property Owners Association actually owns property within PGA. That's why we filed a party intervenor letter early on in the process, and we're here tonight to let you know our thoughts and feelings on, and our findings on this proposed amendment. First, most importantly, the Board of PGA is not in opposition to the changes before you this evening. I think that should be welcome relief. As Kara showed you with the timeline, we've been working diligently with Coulter over the last four to five months to come to the resolution, that's before you in Condition 62 this evening. However, we would like to go through the proposed traffic mitigation measures, and communicate to the commission and our residents the understanding of the commitments that Coulter has promised you this evening. As you're aware, the proposed changes to the DRI reduce the total overall square footage that can now be built within the reserve. While this in itself is not an issue, the future identified roadway improvements adjacent to the reserve are now impacted in such a manner that highly anticipated improvements, that is that six-lane bridge, and associated interchanges are no longer triggered due to this reduction. Currently, St. Lucie Boulevard operates at a Level of Service D in the westbound direction, and a Level of Service C in the eastbound direction. Without any improvements to the bridge, the Level of Service drops to F in the westbound direction, and D in the eastbound direction by 2013. I can't believe that's almost a month away. Also, in the I-95 northbound ramps, in the St. Lucie West Boulevard and Peacock Boulevard, those both drop to a Level of Service E without any improvements at all. These failing links are unacceptable to the residents of PGA. However, under today's revised Chapter 380 Florida statute, as this amendment is a decrease in the overall development potential of the reserve, the project was reviewed as a nonsubstantial deviation, and all these additional traffic studies were not required, and this is actually what staff and also Coulter has brought before you this evening. The residents were concerned that without the six-lane bridge, traffic would get worse over time. Coulter Group LLC met with the Board and our traffic engineer, Mr. Joaquin Vargas, to review the proposed improvements that have been walked through this evening. The Board wanted assurances that the $3.59 million that Coulter Group had committed to the projects were tied directly to those projects, and those funds would be available to fund those projects, and address, most importantly, these failing level of services on the roadway. Coulter has proposed to rebuild the St. Lucie West Boulevard Bridge, adding a third lane in the westbound direction. Upon the completion of this improvement, the Level of Service will be D, that is an acceptable Level of Service in the county. Coulter has agreed to let the contracts for these improvements by 2017. Finally, and most immediately, the proposed light synchronization and dual northbound turn lane at Peacock Boulevard will improve traffic flow considerably, according to both the county engineers and our traffic consultants. Coulter Group has stated to us verbally, and also here tonight on the record, that they will move up the timing of these improvements from the stated DO condition of 18 months to have the work completed prior to the start of spring training in 2018. The 2014, 2014, oh, thank you for correcting me. I like that. Just keep making sure you're awake. The Board was very hesitant to accept these two proposed improvements for the final solution over the bridge, so Coulter, county staff, and city staff created a second-tier review, and this was alluded to in the prior conversation, presentation. And that is, after the light synchronization and the dual turn lane improvements are complete, Coulter is going to go back and actually reanalyze these improvements. A lot of these studies are studies done on paper, they're not studies done in reality. This is actually going to be a real-world condition that Coulter has agreed to. At that point, all the parties are going to come back to the table to look at how we can move up these improvements for the three-lane bridge, and hopefully find funding for an ultimate four-lane bridge. At that point, all the parties are going to come back to the table to look at how we can move up these improvements for the three lane bridge and hopefully find funding for an ultimate four lane bridge. In conclusion, the Board is in agreement with the changes of the development order to the reserve, especially condition 62. These conditions reflect a considerable amount of work by all parties to mitigate the proposed impact the remaining PGA development will have upon St. Lucy West Boulevard. The Board believes these improvements will be positive for the residents. However, these improvements are not the sole responsibility of Coulter. Permitting and inspections are within the purview of DOT, the county and the city. We respectfully request that county administration work together with Coulter to expedite the permitting process. We're not asking that review or inspections be eliminated, just that they're completed in a timely manner. We're also respectfully requesting that the City Commission update the TPO Board and their staff on the proposed conditions. I believe you've already alluded to this this evening, including the commitment to re-study the widening of the bridge to four lanes so that any necessary plans of the TPO can be revised as necessary. And finally, we want to thank county staff and Coulter LLC for working with us to create a better outcome for the residents of PGA and the greater St. Lucy community. I will be here to answer any questions you may have. We have a majority of our Board members here this evening. We also have Mr. Dominic Montemara, who is going to speak on behalf of, uh, the Board as the President. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, uh, good evening. My name is Dominic Montemaro, for the record, and I am the President of PGA Village Property Owners Association. I want to thank, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening and I want to make sure that this is, uh, recorded, uh, for the rec, for the record. Uh, and I apologize, some of what I'm going to say here is somewhat of a repeat, but this is, this is a document that I'm going to read, uh, from, uh, from our Board. I'll begin. We've been meeting with Coulter for the last several months to better understand, uh, the proposed changes, uh, to the development order and the impact that they will have on our community. We understand that based upon the reduction in overall development, several priority or prior conditions of approval are no longer applicable. These include the redesign of the St. Lucy West Bridge. Uh, it, it has always been the desire of the residents to widen the bridge, uh, over I-95. It's most frustrating to learn as a result of the reductions in the development, there's no longer a requirement, uh, to widen. As you know, um, every day during season, especially when the Mets are in town, traffic becomes unbearable. A standstill, uh, is, uh, very common on the bridge. Uh, our residents are concerned that whatever Coulter is proposing will further aggravate traffic conditions on the bridge. We have worked with the traffic engineer and our attorney to review the reports of the county, city, FDOT and Coulter with the intended goal of widening the bridge. However, we did meet with Coulter and their team, um, to hear, uh, about their both short and medium term proposed traffic mitigation strategies. Our own professional team has recommended that we support these measures. We agree. It's our considered, uh, considered opinion that to achieve a significant improvement in traffic flow by early 2014 is a, is greatly preferred to a long, uh, long-term struggle to advance the bridge widening over, over a federal interstate. The widening of the bridge remains a key target for our future activity. The widening of the bridge, uh, to three lanes was initially proposed for, uh, 2023. This was unacceptable, this was an unacceptable timeline, uh, for our residents and Coulter has agreed to move forward to widening, uh, in 2017. Uh, this is reflected in the proposed DO condition number 62. We also think, uh, that the initial improvements to the bridge, the turn lane improvements to Peacock and the light signalization, uh, will greatly improve traffic flow. We also welcome, uh, welcome the last minute, uh, compromise with Coulter to conduct the traffic study after the initial improvements are completed. And I believe that would be within 60 days after, uh, the improvements are completed. Uh, this study will, uh, be based upon, uh, the actual traffic conditions after construction is completed. It will involve both the county, city, FDOT staffs working together to assure that any additional improvements are identified and implemented through a collaborative effort. We are looking forward to the day, uh, the turn lane and the light signalization are complete. Coulter stated, uh, stated on the record, uh, this evening that they will expedite the design permitting and construction of these improvements towards, uh, a completion date by February of 2014. Uh, we support this date and hope that the permitting will be expedited, uh, at the city and county, uh, in order to assist, uh, the, uh, removing of this major inconvenience. Inconvenience, I'm sorry. Uh, we thank you and the staff for involving us in this, uh, process as much as we have. The staff communication is, is appreciated. We also want to thank FDOT for meeting with, uh, our owners and learning more about the I-95 PDE study, which will one day widen 95. We are requesting that you approve the DO as presented this evening, especially condition 62, which was developed with our association to address the timing issues. We also request the county commissioners and staff continue to work with FDOT and the city to make sure that the improvement, improvements communicated by Coulter, uh, to all three authorities as part of the conditions and in the, in the record this evening are expedited, uh, in review as quickly as possible. We also are, uh, committed to continue to work with Coulter and the county to make sure that these improvements are implemented. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If, if I can just give an opportunity for those that have not yet spoke to have a chance and then you're welcome to come back up.
Evening Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address to you on this very important issue. My name is Steve Collins and I'm a PGA Village resident. Uh, first of all, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but it, the current conditions are basically jeopardizing public safety. Uh, there's been numerous accidents at this location and more importantly, if there is a need to evacuate PGA Village, there's not capacity now to accomplish that in a realistic timeframe because of the inadequate bridge over 95, whether that be a nuclear accident there at the power station or hurricane, um, evacuation, it's just not going to happen. Uh, secondly, um, there's been a masterful bait and switch shell game with regard to this reduction of impact. They have, Coulter has successfully divided these applications between Verano and the reserve. In fact, the traffic loads out of Verano substantially come through the reserve, through Commercial Boulevard. The traffic going back to Verano from the commercial areas on St. Lucy West Boulevard accessed the bridge that we're talking about here tonight. So you can't say there's a reduction of that impact because as Verano builds out, that bridge at St. Lucy West Boulevard gets more use, more traffic. It's exponential because it's already, as they pointed out, an substandard level of service. So I would say there's, there is indeed a increased impact by combining these two DRIs. Uh, thirdly, um, the 10th amendment serves to allow the developer to avoid what was a commitment to build a six line bridge, uh, that was in conditions 57 of the DRI, the vision, in the, uh, development order. Now there is no commitment to build virtually anything, um, other than what's been verbalized in this amendment. There's been no drawings presented. We don't know exactly what this additional, uh, westbound lane would even look like. Uh, there has been any talk about is that structure going to actually be widened to accomplish this? Right now, there's a bike lane and there's a pedestrian, um, walkway that uses that existing bridge structure. Are those going to be removed in order to construct this westbound, uh, extra lane? There's been no explanation on that. Um, also, this additional condition 62 is highly ambiguous. Um, it tries to incorporate a condition from another development order and as a result has created, uh, some internal conflicts within the resolution itself and within the development order. Uh, for example, condition 62 requires the Verano Development LLC to approve any amended, uh, impact fee agreement. Well, they don't have anything to do with reserve PGA and it gives essentially Coulter veto power by requiring this Verano Development LLC approval for these changes. Uh, with regard to that commitment, uh, in 62, the monetary commitment is, uh, $3.595 million. Where that number came from has never been really clear to me because there's been no engineering to show what the cost would be to build this west line road. Who knows whether or not this $3.595 million is going to be enough to get the job done, particularly because they're allowed to apply soft costs. That is, the, um, engineering fees, the design fees, all these traffic studies to roll into that cost number. So by the time that's all taken out, who knows how much money is actually left to get this done? Um, with regard to the traffic study, in the, uh, in the application material, there's a letter from Florida DOT dated March 29th of 2012 that challenges the, the Coulter traffic study. It says that the methodology is suspect and hasn't been substantiated. So I don't know that these numbers, they're not based on any real life empirical data. They're all computer generated models and FDOT questioned the methodology of that study. Uh, finally, uh, even if there is sufficient money, um, and if they get some of these things done, this condition 62 allows the diversion of funds that would have been used to improve this bridge to be done, to, uh, to be used to construct additional projects within the city of Port St. Lucie. Uh, in other words, this, uh, money that's supposed to be set aside to get the job done, uh, at the St. Lucy West Boulevard can be diverted to projects, uh, well within the city of Port St. Lucie and well away from this area being impacted. So in, in light of all these questions and, uh, the ineffectiveness of what's being proposed, the west lane, one lane, um, going westbound is not going to solve the problem long-term and there's really no reason to expect that it's going to, uh, solve the problem with regard to emergency evacuations because that's not where the traffic's going to be coming from anyway, in that case. So in light of all these issues, we would ask that the commission vote down and deny the application.
Thank you.
I'm Betty Modell and my bedtime is 7:30. But I came here because again, my quality of life is being ruined, caused stress because of Coulter's actions. And I came just to reiterate that things that Coulter has said that they were going to do, our preserve lands were built on, uh, I don't have to mention everything that everybody else has, but I moved up here from West Palm Beach where I was born. I'm a third generation Floridian and I moved up here for my quality of life to be, as I remember, Fort Pierce, a nice, quiet fishing village. The Swedes and Danes ran the orange groves. And all I have is Coulter overbuilding, making the streets. I mean, yes, there was a building boom, but we are overbuilt. And, and for them to add more people to go around our circle, well, it's just ruining the quality of life. I, I'll just move back to West Palm Beach. I'll figure out a way. But anyway, if you would take it into consideration, I know Coulter's a big outfit. They're building in West Palm Beach and all over the place too. But will they stick to their word? Their track record says no. So thank you very much. It's past 7:30.
Thank you.
Janice Rosenbaum, a resident in PGA. I just have one statement. I keep hearing the word acceptable to describe the bridge improvements that Coulter is going to make. Why wouldn't we strive for excellence instead of acceptable? That's all.
Is there anyone else?
I've heard it all.
Um, Mr. Sapo, you wanted a chance to address some of the questions and concerns from the residents.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to, but, address a couple of things, some of which I think emanate from, um, some confusion in a lot of the correspondence and emails. We are in fact reducing the entitlements in the reserve. We're not increasing them. There's been some discussion about the 400 residential units, uh, and I think there was an email that went out that talked about it. One of the residents talked to me about it in the lobby while we were waiting for the meeting. There are 400 unbuilt units approximately in, left in the PGA Village Reserve DRI. Those were permitted to Vestana with a timeshare company, uh, actually prior to Coulter's acquisition of the property. It was like 1997, I believe. Um, Vestana built 40 of them. They have 360 that are unbuilt and we don't know what's going to happen with them, but they're currently permitted and there's nothing we can do. We are reducing the remaining residential units that we could build by 300. So there's that. Uh, one woman commented about the fire station. In fact, um, a number of years ago, Coulter was required to provide a site for a fire station to the fire department, which we did. Uh, the site is up, um, it's in the industrial area of the reserve. It's actually in the city, but it's about a two and a half acre lot that the, um, St. Lucy Fire Department actually owns now. Um, so one person asked about where the $3.59 million number came from. That was a number that came out of the condition in Verano. And when we went to the city and the county to say, let's use this money for something better than a contribution towards improvements, let's actually do the improvements and let's not wait till the 1,100 units have to be built. Let's put a time certain on them that accelerates those improvements. So what our condition in Verano actually says is that we'll take that $3.5 million, $3.59, use it for these improvements. To the extent that there's cost overruns, we'll be responsible for the cost overruns. To the extent that there, the improvements are built and there's money left over, that's where the money gets, um, handed over to the city to make improvements. And I believe it's within one mile on St. Lucy West Boulevard, within one mile of that bridge, right? So, um, in the unlikely event there's money left over, it does, does get paid out. In the more likely event that there's cost overruns, we're responsible for them. In the more likely event that there's cost overruns, we're responsible for them. I think that's...
Actually, may I add in?
Sure.
There was a statement that said that the trip-generated number requiring the six lane, that's still in this agreement. Even though you're reducing your impacts and it's projected that you would never reach them, that condition is still there, should...
Actually, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, right. And in fact, also, in the event that we came back and wanted to get, to increase again, the entitlements within the reserve, we'd have to, A, come back to the commission and B, that condition still exists in the development order. So you're absolutely right. Thank you.
And the other question from Mr. Collins was, where did the projections come for the four-laning of the bridge? I understood in some of my conversations that there was a projection on the six-lane bridge to be $10 million. Is that accurate to say?
That was the projection back in 2004, actually. And I should probably say one other thing about the bridge. There was a question that was asked by, I think, the second last speaker. We are adding structure to the bridge. We're adding an additional 12 feet to the bridge. So we're not just taking out bike lanes and sidewalks and restriping and trying to accomplish it that way. There'll be an additional 12 feet added to the bridge. So, thank you again.
And you, the last person that spoke about the acceptable level of service, that's a term used in the industry for traffic studies. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Because we always strive, from a county position, to always to increase or create a better circumstance on any level of service that is unacceptable. Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any, is there anyone else from the public? Yes, ma'am.
I will just say that I thank Steve Collins for his, what he said, because I think that it probably mirrors the majority of the people that I've been in contact with. And I usually email most of them. And I think that he has it really on cue there with the emergency idea. A lot of us are quite worried about that. And it is the outlet road which goes to Commercial or goes through Reserve Boulevard, which will take you out to Glades and afterward then to 95, or you would have to go the other way. And I think that most of the people do want this bridge to be four or six lanes, at least four, because that would be something that would be more travelable. So I thank you for that.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I think that this...
If you'll let me finish up the public hearing and close it before I come back to the board. Is there anyone else before I close the public hearing? Comment? Thank you. We'll come back to the board at this time.
I was just going to state that those of us who sit on the Transportation Planning Organization always strive to find the best possible answer to traffic issues, especially when it comes to building a bridge. We know that the cost of building bridges is quite expensive and if we can get a developer to agree upfront at $3.6 million with some consideration by the state, I think we can have that happen faster, which is why I asked those questions earlier, that is there a commitment? Can we get the performance bond or some other document that says? We have it in hand and I've heard you say that that's accurate and we can count on that and we could take that to the state. I just want to nod yes and confirm that that's accurate. Not that you can provide the cash upfront until we have the agreement, but...
But when we... Just to make it clear, we said when we have the agreement and the permits in hand, we will post surety to assure that those improvements get done, whether it's a letter of credit or a surety bond. So yes.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm going to follow up with your conversation because it's one I've had with Coulter, it's one I've had with the homeowners' association's representatives. And in fact, on tomorrow's TPO meeting, there is actual discussion of bringing us all up to date and that board is consisted of the Port St. Lucie City Council, Fort Pierce and the county. And it is open to the public, so I would invite, if you're able to, to come, but you can rest assured, we will be addressing this issue with DOT. But it's actually the widening of 95 and the different bridges from Becker Road all the way down to Midway are all included in that discussion and it is proposed on DOT's plans, from what I saw and reviewed this morning, the four-laning of that road. There has been behind-the-scenes discussions with DOT at the staff levels to try to get them to expedite, but as you can see, Coulter can't put anything in writing at that point in regard to... DOT is actually worse than they are about doing it and putting it in writing. They will not commit until that point, the PDNE study that they're going under is approved. And of course, they've got a lot more involved in it. But I have no problem moving forward and getting them to try to advance that. We've done it in the past on different road projects. I see no problem with trying to do that with them, you know, on this particular one. But I would ask that letters from the homeowners' association and individual homeowners will help go a long way with us pushing that issue. So you may not make tomorrow's meeting, but that issue, you will be hearing from me requesting those letters of support to move that forward. It is actually at the new TPO meeting and if you get with me after the meeting, I will give you the address. They just changed it just this week to the new meeting place. But it is in Port St. Lucie, on Port St. Lucie Boulevard, if I'm not mistaken, off of it. 2:00.
I'm 2:00 to 4:00.
Because, so Commissioner, I am right there with you and in fact, I've got it all over my TPO notes.
Me, too.
In regards to it. Because just on my own, if there's a way we can get four lanes put in versus three and then having to tear up when they're doing the 95 construction, have to go back in and put everybody all through that construction again, that is one of the concerns that I'm sharing. So if you think it's bad now, wait till the construction starts. I'm sorry, I was just handed the address. It's 466 Southwest Port St. Lucie Boulevard, Suite 3. And I've got it here if anybody needs it afterwards. Thank you, Ms. Outlaw. Is there any, open up for questions or comments from the board at this point?
I just want to add into, you stated that the property for the fire station was committed and now under the control of the Fire District. But only until such time, the Fire District will build that. At such time, the Fire District deems appropriate. So that is in the documentation. It's been in there, it's not been changed and that property has been transferred.
That's been deeded.
Deeded to the Fire District.
Are there any other questions from the board, comments from the board?
I just want to ask, when was the last, this transportation study was done recently, was it not? I mean, we had the most accurate information. I think it was done just recently.
It's based on current information in 2012.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a comment. I will admit, when the information was first brought to me, that the densities, well, the units were being changed and the intensity of the Commercial was being swapped over. I guess dismay, well, I was very disturbed because that meant that there, no longer did we have a way to trigger the improvements. I am very relieved to discover that there has been this four or five months of hard work that have brought this before us to the point where we can count on improvements being made. I will tell you that, and I don't know, you know, there are a lot of things I've learned in this job that I didn't know I wanted to learn. And one of the things I have learned is that intersection improvements do trigger a great change in traffic flows. I know it doesn't sound like much when you're expecting a six-lane bridge, you're being told you're going to get a two-lane turning action, that you're going to get your lights synchronized. I can guarantee you, that kind of change, I have seen in the county make great degrees of difference. So I'm very pleased that we were able to move forward immediately with those improvements. Quite honestly, I know that the Mets spring training is a great trial for you folks. Well, actually, because everybody wants to have this done by spring training in 2014, it's to our advantage, it's pushing things forward. And as far as the bridge improvements has been said by my colleagues here, I too sit on the Transportation Planning Organization and we will be pressing to see if we can't get the state involved in that. They are moving forward. I think the kickoff meeting is tomorrow for the 95 improvements from down in Martin County to just north of Becker. So we will be working with them to see if we can't make, get things squared away by the, so that will work in synchronization as well.
Any other comments, questions?
I just wanted to state that, you know, we just had an issue earlier and I didn't agree with the position of our board, but I want to commend the amount of collaborative effort that has taken place here. Multiple government agencies, the neighborhoods, the association, our staff, I mean, that's a lot of work. And I think what we've seen is, even when you're up against a tough competition or tough decisions or tough issues in front of you, you can still work together and make things happen. I think that based on the reductions in the impacts of the DRI, working still in the DRI component gives us the ability to have these conversations, to request and demand, if you will, sometimes, of the developer to find solutions to these problems. Outside of the DRI process, it makes it more difficult. So I appreciate that Coulter stays in the DRI process because we create a better product in the end. So with that said, Madam Chair, if there isn't any further discussion, I would move approval of Resolution 12004 approving the Tenth Amendment with the conditions listed.
Second. Discussion, will that include the comments that Coulter put on the record tonight, to be included in those or not?
Absolutely, including the conditions as stated.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? And I just want to put some comments on the record. I have, like you, Commissioner Lewis, I was struggling with this in the beginning and, you know, when this offer started last year, it seemed like it. But then I was also very concerned as the emails started coming through from the residents, many of which are sitting out here today. But the more I looked at the picture of, is this the best, is this not, we're not raising the number of people that will be living there. So that's actually the decrease that's coming through there. Well, there's a decrease in what's being allowed in there. There's already an existing amount of people that can live in there that's already platted from way back, and permitted, actually. The point on the bridge, one of the biggest conditions to me is the fact that it was a trigger number that was being used to do the six-laning. This, we now have date certain because that trigger number, as has been mentioned several times, was a good chance it was never going to be met, at least not any time that I could think of. So knowing that there's a date certain, and I will credit the homeowners' association for having worked that with Coulter, and I just want to make sure that what we passed tonight has also been approved by the city of Port St. Lucie, so that there's actually now two entities that will be overlooking and push this into effect, because they are tied together.
Madam Chair, yes, indeed. This is, this condition that you see in the reserve is replicated from the Verano condition and is also in the city's reserve development order. So the same language exists in all three.
Madam Chair...
And if I, I'm sorry, if I may, just as long as I, you know, I have a floor for just a moment. I really appreciate the commission's acknowledgement of all the effort that's gone into this. And from SaaS perspective, we'd specifically like to acknowledge the POA's attorney, Marcy Nolan, for her involvement. She's really done a wonderful effort in coordinating this between all the parties and we really appreciate, you know, her efforts. Thank you.
Madam Chair, in regard to your last question about Port St. Lucie, I was there the evening. Port St. Lucie considered this issue and they were just as concerned to see to it that we were going to agree. I think for once, certainly, you will have, as you said, the two of us overseeing this with great interest and we'll be right on top of it.
I'll only ask you to remember that when we have a Fort Pierce issue, we have county and city working together.
You know, I was just...
I couldn't let that go.
I was just thinking the same thing.
And Commissioner, I am right there with you if...
But he said it, I didn't.
And I can appreciate the comment because I would love nothing more than to have the city, Fort Pierce, work with our staff.
Sounds wonderful.
There is a motion and a second on the floor, Madam...
Madam Chair, real quickly, did we do disclosures on this issue? Because I've got listings...
Thank you. I've got it wrote down to do that. Thank you. Are there, this is a quasi-judicial, are there disclosures to be made?
I have met with the applicant, I have met with the attorneys, I've met with the POA, I've met with a number of the residents and I've read all the email documentation and even the most recent ones that were submitted last minute.
I met with Mr. Sapo, I met with the attorney for the board and the board from, the gentleman that are here with the board from the POA.
I've met with staff from the representation of Cotler, I mean Coulter, I'm sorry. Also met with HOA and Ms. Nolan and also met with staff on the issue.
Okay, and I too have met with staff, the attorney, Coulter's representatives and members of the community, whether it be the homeowners' association or individual members, you know, in the various emails that I think we've all been copied with. Madam Secretary, would you please call the room?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am. Motion passes.
And then the record reflected Chairman Maury had a conflict of interest?
Yes, and he didn't, he abstained from the entire conversation. Seeing nothing further on the agenda, is there any comments from... Oh, I didn't know if you wanted... Do you want to take it?
Welcome back.
Let the record reflect that the gavel was passed back to the commissioner.
Before we conclude some of this, is this somebody's last meeting?
I thought it was a good one.
Mr. Chair, this will be my last night meeting with the board.
So we have another day meeting with you? I was thinking...
If I have something on the agenda.
Okay. Well, we appreciate all of your efforts as well and we wish you well as you move on to your local adventure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That, are there any other items that need to be brought before the board?
No, sir.
I just want to remind everybody about Pearl Harbor Day on the 7th. There are two activities, as stated earlier by our friends from the Veterans Group. One will be in Fort Pierce at the Community Center and the Veterans Memorial Area off of Indian River Drive at 11:00. And then the other will be at 0755, I think I recall how he said that, at the former Veterans Memorial Area in Port St. Lucie, directly across from the post office on Veterans Memorial Parkway. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any comments from our esteemed administrator?
No, sir.
Good evening. After every once in a while, I'll have a little comment from our administrator. He's been sitting there so quietly tonight, just helping keep everybody on track. With that, any other announcements or comments from the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mm-hmm.
We're adjourned.